Thank you, sir.
So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the March 22nd, 2022 Meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Ben Holland from the Dunkirk Baptist Church if he would give us an invocation, please.
And before I begin, I'd just like to introduce my daughter Caroline, who's with me today. I want her to come and see how a County Commissioners Board meeting was held, so just welcome her here as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father God, we thank you so much that we can be gathered here today. Lord, I pray for those that are being recognized today. Lord, I pray for those that are bringing business before this body today. Lord, I pray for those that are looking to see the future of Calvert County and the direction that we're going and the decisions that this body is making. And, Lord, I pray that you give wisdom, that you give guidance, and, Lord, that your presence will be here to lead and to bring us into a future that is beneficial, profitable to each one of us. Lord, we do lift up those who are in Ukraine and those involved in the Ukrainian and Russian conflict. Lord, we pray for your sovereignty to reign there, and, Lord, that you bring that conflict to a close. But, Lord, we lift up this time to you, and again, we pray for your Spirit to lead and guide. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Holland. We appreciate it, and we hope that your daughter gets a good civics lesson today. So, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
Mr. President, now I move that we approve and adopt the amended agenda as published and adding an additional new business item, number six, for an intercategory transfer requested by the Board of Education to increase contracted psychologists' overtime salaries and sick leave, contracted bus routes, and special education transportation, and reducing psychologist's salary, instructional assistant's salary, and certified teacher's salary. Second.
I have a motion, a second, that we amend the agenda to include item from the Board of Education transfer. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So, the first item, next item on the agenda is public service announcements. I just want everyone to know that the Veterans Affairs Commission survey that was out is still ongoing. It's still time to get your responses back in. Also, want to say that the applications for the Police Accountability Board, that process is still open until this Friday. You can get those applications in. We were told this morning, to date, we have 58 applications for about 10 spots. So, there is great interest in the Police Accountability Board. And as we mentioned last week, we have decided to appoint a Citizens Review Committee to review those applications and make recommendations to the board for final selection. And that's all I have under public service announcements. The next item on the agenda is proclamation. The first one is for the Calvert Marine Museum Volunteer Recognition Day. Commissioner Hart?
Good morning. Do we have someone to come up and get the ball rolling here? If you want to say your name and come on up front, please.
Good morning. I'm Lowell Martin. I'm the president of the volunteer council at the museum. My vice president.
Hi, I'm Ellen Kern, and I'm the vice president.
I'm Krista Kona, and I present paleontology at the volunteer council.
I'm Jeff Murray, the museum director at the Calvert Marine Museum. Thank you.
Do you have anybody else? Jeff, you want to bring down?
Sure, if you'd like to come down.
Hi, I'm Sherry Reed, and I'm the volunteer coordinator. I'm the one that's blessed with all these people.
All right. Well, good morning, guys. And before I get started, and some of you have heard this old, old story before, but, you know, growing up down there, there was not, for me, there was a lot to do because I liked to fish and crab and ride my mini-bike that Ms. Hofnagle heard very, very many times, if you ever ask her, riding by her house regularly. So, the next time you see her, say, "My cart ride his bike past there?" Oh, yes. But going to that museum was a treat, especially for my brother. My brother loves shark's teeth to this day. That's still a pastime of his. And to go through there and play with the sand and just to watch it, I mean, I'm 53 now, so I don't know. I remember going there around eight years old, something like that. I mean, so just to watch it change over the years. And it is such a special place, and you know it would not be there without volunteers. There's no way. We just could not keep up. I mean, especially when nobody lived here. You know, all we had was volunteers for stuff. So, I really can't thank you enough. And this is proof of, you know, for all these years of, it makes a difference. I mean, my brother, when he still comes back and goes through there and reminisces from like when he was a child. So, I want to say thank you. And we have this proclamation today. It says, "Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County wish to pay tribute to the many local citizens who have chosen to donate their time, talent, and energy to help make the Calvert Marine Museum a great destination to learn about regional paleontology as well as biology and marine, excuse me, maritime history of the tidal Patuxent River and adjacent Chesapeake Bay. And whereas the members of Calvert Marine Museum volunteer families provide invaluable service to the community as they dedicate themselves to making the museum experience interesting, meaningful, and fun for our visitors. And whereas the volunteers of Calvert Marine Museum enhance the overall experience for our visitors by assisting staff with such important tasks as serving the public as dossier, staffing the museum store, answering phones, helping to care for the animals, working on exhibits, restoring boats, and assisting the library. And whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation, the Calvert Marine Museum wishes to honor these volunteers at the annual volunteer recognition event. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that March 22nd, 2022 be known as Volunteer Recognition Day, volunteers dedicated, celebrated, and appreciated at the Calvert Marine Museum in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that the appreciation of all Calvert County citizens is hereby extended to all who have supported the Calvert Marine Museum through the past year, given under our hands and seal this 22nd day, March 22nd, signed by all five county commissioners."
I'm not sure who to present this to. You guys have been coming down.
Thank you all for what you do. Thank you all. Tonight.
Thank you.
Tonight. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll see you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Yeah, I know.
So, we are, we're very blessed in Calvert County to have a great volunteerism spirit, you know, between our fire departments. And last year was the first time because of COVID that I got to attend their volunteer appreciation night, which is tonight. It was amazing to see the amount of volunteerism that goes on at Calvert Marine Museum. That facility couldn't function without all these volunteers. They have volunteers there that are full-time employees, but they volunteer their time, 40 hours a week, 52 weeks out of the year. They show up every day, just like a job, without pay. They recognize volunteers the night we were there with tens of thousands of hours of volunteer service to the Marine Museum. It was incredible. I hadn't seen anything like it, like I said, other than our fire departments. They're a great symbol of the kind of people we have here in Calvert County that see a community effort and join in and give of their time and talents to make that thing go. So, we thank you all very much on behalf of all the citizens of Calvert County for what you do to support that institution. So, thank you, and we'll see you tonight. So, the next item on the agenda is proclamation for National Ag Day, and I know we have some people in the audience. Come on up.
Hi, I am Kathy Cosgrove. I am the president of the Calvert County Farm Bureau.
I'm Jamie Terrell. I also serve on the Calvert County Farm Bureau. This is Margaret with me, and I'm the District Three Director for the Maryland Farm Bureau.
Thank you, ladies. So, Commissioner Hart wanted to read the proclamation because he said he probably has more experience than I do in agriculture.
Well, see, and I told Commissioner Hanson, I said, "I heard that you need water from time to time and at certain times." So, I think I got it.
And that's instead of his knowledge of agriculture. I have a little bit of experience with agriculture, so it's a great privilege and honor for me today to be able to present this proclamation. And just a few facts that I learned this morning from Julie, that I probably knew somewhere in the back of my head. In Calvert County, we have about 280 farms. They encompass about 25,000 acres, and they average 95 acres per farm. That's what's stuck in my head, Julie. Thank you very much. And, but people come to Calvert County because of our rural atmosphere. And I've always said my entire life, it's not land preservation that saves agriculture, it's profitable farms. And as long as these individuals continue to make a profit, those farms will stay farms. You know, it's the best deterrent to development is profitable farms. So, we have to do what we can do to make sure that these individuals have profitable farms. And in my lifetime, agriculture in Calvert County has changed tremendously. When I was young, this county, we grew tobacco. When you rode up and down the roads in the summertime, there was tobacco everywhere as far as you could see. Those days are gone. I believe last year, Mike Phipps probably had the only tobacco in the entire county. His little patch along the road that he said until he dies, he's going to make sure there's some tobacco in Calvert County. So, things have changed a lot because of buy local. Now, we find first-generation farmers in Calvert. We find an opportunity for generations that may have left, and now are back. Because of you all out there and the citizens that buy your products from them, give them the ability to make a profit and stay on those farms. So, I want to encourage all of you to make sure you buy local. You go to the Calvert Ag website, and you will see a list of all the farmers in Calvert County and the products that they sell. And we strongly encourage you to reach out those individuals. The farmers markets will be opening up pretty soon. Don't know exactly when, but pretty soon you can attend those, or you can go to the website and shop all year long, and at your convenience. So, I've talked long enough. So, I'm going to read this proclamation. "Whereas the Agricultural Council of America, ACA, has designated March 22nd, 2022 as National Ag Day, a time when producers, agricultural associations, corporations, universities, government agencies, and countless others across America gather to recognize and celebrate the abundance provided by American agriculture. And whereas Calvert County's more than 450 farmers and ranchers are national symbols of strength and character, displaying ingenuity in all endeavors and perseverance in the face of hardships while supplying our country, state, and nation with an abundance of high-quality agricultural goods and products. And whereas Calvert County farmers and ranchers uphold the rural character of the county while contributing to our local economy, protecting the environment, and enriching our quality of life. And whereas Calvert County farm families are stewards of more than 25,000 acres of farmland, contributing to the health, beauty, productivity, and quality of our state's water, soil, and forest resources for the benefit of all. And whereas, over the last two years, the agricultural sector has stepped up to ensure a stable food supply in the face of incredible challenges prompted by COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, Calvert County is committed to maintaining its strong rural heritage and keeping the county agricultural industry strong, diverse, and sustainable while meeting consumer demand for local, healthy food, and experience-based opportunities. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that March 22nd, 2022 be known as Agricultural Appreciation Day in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we encourage all citizens to be mindful of the role agriculture plays in their lives and acknowledge the importance of agriculture for Calvert County's sustainability, given our hands and seal this 22nd day of March, 2022, signed by all five." Thank you, ladies. So, I'll give her a plug. Kathy Cosgrove's having Easter egg hunts at her farm. If you go online to Horseman Farms, you can see how that activity runs and get some tickets, right, Kathy? You're quite welcome. So, the next item on the agenda is consent. Item number one under consent, Department of Community Resources, Capital Projects, Twin Beaches Library. Item two, Department of Technology Services, Security Awareness Policy. Item three, Department of Finance and Budget, Family Magistrates Office, Child Support Budget Modification. Item four, Department of Finance and Budget, FY 2023 Adult Treatment Court Grant Application. Are there any objections or amendments to the consent agenda? Hearing none, those consent items will be adopted as presented. Next item on the agenda is new business. Item one, Department of Parks and Recreation Budget Adjustment for Aquatic Safety Personnel. Director Nizal.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Shannon Nizal, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Brooke Barco, Aquatic Division Chief.
And I'll go ahead and read the memo. So, background, Calvert County employs over 100 staff annually in aquatic safety positions, which calculate to 29.62 FTEs. These positions include lifeguards, water safety instructors, and pool managers. Currently, there are 50 lifeguards, 22 water safety instructors, and 11 pool managers. We have 12.82 FTE vacant in lifeguards, 2.41 vacant in water safety instructors, and .47 vacant in pool managers. Most positions are between .15 and .31 FTE, which equates to vacancies of 70 to 80 lifeguards, 16 water safety instructors, and two pool managers. The 2022 pay scale, starting pay rate for these first responder positions begins at 1324 per hour. These employees in a year make over 300 water saves, avoiding the need to call out emergency services and saving the lives of Calvert County citizens. These aquatic safety professionals receive the same first aid CPR training as EMT staff and are required to pass rigorous testing even to be qualified for these positions. Discussion. In today's climate, potential employees have many different options for employment that make more money and are far easier and less stressful than being an aquatic safety professional. In comparison, the average rate for a lifeguard in Maryland is 1360 per hour, according to data collected by Indeed.com. An average pay rate currently is not enough to recruit and retain quality employees. Over the past year, we've seen a steady decline in individuals applying for and accepting aquatic safety positions. This decline has led to a reduction in hours of facility, less programming opportunities, burnout of current staff, and less flexibility for the public. An option to offset costs of increased pay includes fee schedule adjustments for aquatic-related admissions and programs. The fee schedule for aquatics facilities and programs has not been altered since the Edward T. Hall Aquatic Center opened in 2010. Fiscal impact. The fiscal impact is an annual increase in staffing costs of $101,665 based on current calculations. If approved, amends the adopted budget for FY 22 to appropriate and allocate $26,000 for staffing costs through June of 2022 of aquatic safety personnel by increasing the general fund contribution to Fund V in the amount of $26,000. Conclusion and recommendation, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve Budget Adjustment 197 and direct staff to account for this increase in the FY 2023 Commissioners' Recommended Budget. And we are able to answer any questions that you may have on this request.
So, this is just, this request is just based on a need to fill those positions?
Right. We've seen that we are not getting as many applications, and we are struggling to keep our year-round pool facility staffed, let alone starting to get into the summer seasons when we have two other pools that will be open to the public. So, we, at this time, we are relying on many of our staff to work overtime to keep the facilities open at their current hours, which ultimately ends up in burnout of staff and those looking to go to other jobs that maybe aren't quite as stressful. So, we really see the need to be able to appropriately compensate our water safety professionals for the work that they do.
I would approve this, but I still don't think it's enough money for you to find the help that you need. I just don't think you're going to get a pool of people to work for that price. When you can go to the local wah-wahs, starting at $15 an hour, you're just not going to get the help that you need at this rate, I don't think.
I think this would be a first step in being able to see what we're able to accomplish with this. We do have a very strong and very dedicated and passionate group of employees currently that are doing what they need to do and going above and beyond of what is required to make sure that our residents and our visitors to the pools get the quality service that they deserve. So, this is a step in the right direction, and rather than being able to do something that's all at once causing additional pay parity for other areas, at this point, we feel that something is better than doing nothing at this point.
And did you look at other pool facilities in the region to compare your hourly rates?
So, the average across the state is, for a lifeguard position, is 1360 per hour. And what we have seen, so that data is over the last year. So, we have seen that there are some that are making steps to work on increases as well as they see the rates going up with the minimum wage increases as well. And some locales are working on the same thing as we're working on right now, doing it a little bit at a time as funding is made available.
Questions? Actions? Motions?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the Budget Adjustment 197 and direct staff to account for this increase in FY 23 Commissioners' Recommended Budget.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, that we approve and enact Budget Adjustment 197 and direct staff to account for the increase in the FY 23 Commissioners' Recommended Budget. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item under new business, Department of Public Works, Agricultural Tire Recycling and Collection Event. Mr. Ritter and Ms. Maggert?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm Heather Maggert, Acting Division Chief for Solid Waste. Good morning. Today, I'm going to be presenting a memo on the Agricultural Tire Recycling Collection Event. For some background, the Solid Waste Division has previously hosted no-cost tire recycling collection events funded by the Maryland Department of Environment for Calvert County residents, businesses, and agricultural farms. The discussion, Maryland Department of Environment allocates funding for counties in Maryland to utilize for tire programs, including tire recycling collection events. This year, the Maryland Department of Environment has partnered with Maryland Environmental Services to offer seven Maryland counties the opportunity to host an agricultural tire collection event. Solid Waste Division staff has requested April 8th, 2022 through April 23rd, 2022, as Calvert County's event dates. Solid Waste Division staff has worked with MES to coordinate the logistics of the event, including dates, promotions, and identification requirements for farmers. An intergovernmental agreement between MES and Calvert County has been issued and must be signed prior to the event. Advertising for this event will take place through the Calvert County Farm Bureau. No paid advertising is planned at this time. The fiscal impact of this tire collection event includes a loss of revenue equal to $13 per ton of scrap tires collected. If the collection event reaches MDE's maximum reimbursement amount of $85,000, it will result in a loss of $5,135 in revenue. That's about, that's 395 tons, 395 tons at $13 per ton. In addition, if the collection event exceeds the reimbursement rate, the county would pay $215 per ton for each ton of tires in excess of the maximum allotted reimbursement. Based on collection totals for past tire events, it is not anticipated that this collection event will exceed the maximum allotted reimbursement. For conclusions, recommendation, the Maryland Department of Environment provides opportunities for tire recycling events through grant-funded programs to ensure environmentally safe and proper recycling efforts. The Solid Waste Division has successfully utilized these programs in prior years and recommends that the Board of County Commissioners sign the intergovernmental agreement with Maryland Environmental Services to allow for the participation in the 2022 MDE-funded Tire Recycling Collection Event. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
So, last year, we hosted, the county hosted one, just trying to make sure we get those.
In 2020.
Tires cleaned up, sorry, 2020. This time, it's funded by MDE. It's going to last two weeks.
Correct.
And when you take your tires there, it's not for commercial venues. It's for agricultural use. So, you need to supply a Schedule F or a property tax receipt that shows you have ag land or the postcard that Farm Bureau is going to mail out to its members, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
In this memo, though, it says businesses. It said, "For Calvert County residents, businesses, and agricultural farms."
In the past, so the, in 2020, the Tire Collection Event was for residents and agricultural, agricultural businesses and farmers. This tire event is just for tires from Calvert County farms.
Okay.
Right. Because it says in the background, that was previous events.
Okay, okay.
But this event, since it's funded by MDE, is for agriculture only.
Right.
Mr. Galloway?
Not that I'll be able to participate because I'm not a farmer like you or an expert like Mr. Hart. However, if a, and this is just for informational purposes, people out there, for a person who has a farm, agriculture, this and that, are we talking agriculture tires only like they came off a tractor, or are we talking whatever tires they may have on the farm?
Any tires.
To include passenger, light truck, and whatnot.
Correct. Any tires that come from the farm.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because we use passenger tires on our wagons, and we have big trucks, and... Because we use passenger tires on our wagons and we have big trucks and...
So we had an issue when people were bringing tree debris in and people were bringing home their company trucks and throwing the limbs on there and then coming to the landfill with the company name on there. If, say, a farmer happens to have the paperwork with him, but he has a commercial vehicle, is that okay?
That's fine, yes.
As long as he's got his documentation.
Right.
Correct.
Doesn't matter what he's driving.
Correct.
Mercedes or Volkswagen or...
Or John Deere.
Or John Deere!
Put it in the rolls.
He'll take the whole tractor, I heard.
For what they're bringing today, you don't wanna take one to the dump.
Right.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and second that we authorize the Board President to sign the intergovernmental agreement to allow for participation in the 2022 Tire Recycling Event. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
James? You shouldn't talk so much, you're dragging out our meetings.
Yeah.
He'll be back.
Next item on the agenda is Department of Community Resources Governor's Office of Crime Prevention Victim and Youth Services Grant. Julie?
Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Machino, Coordinator for the Calvert County Family Network.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're just gonna run through the memo. And I'm Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Background: The Calvert County Family Network is Calvert County's Local Management Board. CCFN oversees, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, multiple programs supported through funding provided by the Governor's Office of Crime Control, Victim, and Youth Services through the Children's Cabinet Interagency Fund. In its FY 2023 Notice of Funding Announcement, the office indicated CCFN is eligible for a $400,383 funding allocation for administration and programs. Programs must address the needs of children, youth, and families as prioritized in our community needs assessment and planning process. CCFN is requesting additional funds in the amount of $106,747 to support local care team administration. In its planning process, CCFN prioritized pediatric mental health, addressing household dysfunction, and youth employment in alignment with the governor's goal areas. The CCFN board proposes using CCIF funds for the following programs: $95,280 for Calvert County Family Network Administration, $69,367,000 for community support, $106,747 for local care team administration, $17,520 for a family engagement program, $81,000 for home visiting hybrid for high-risk moms, $62,216 for the Open Table Program, and $75,000 for the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Outreach and Enrollment Program. Fiscal impact: A 27.5% benefits match of $20,145 for CCFN administration is included in the FY '23 Recommended Budget. Additionally, the Open Table Program will include a .7 FTE Program Coordinator position. This new position will be fully funded by CCIF grant funds. Conclusion: I respectfully request the BOCC approve the new staffing request for the Open Table Program Coordinator and authorize the President to sign the State Assurances Document and the Certificate Regarding Lobbying. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
There you go. So this is, part of this agreement is cooperative with the Board of Education School System, correct?
Yes, with each of these grants, there are vendor agreements with these programs. And some of them have been going on for years, the home visiting program, Julie, we fund two, healthy families, and the home visiting hybrid program.
Yeah, and I can also add, a portion of the home visiting hybrid funding also goes to the Health Department. There's two vendors for that program. So majority of it does go to the public schools for a home visiting program. $10,000 of that money goes to the Health Department.
And of course, the county acts as the flow-through for these funds and have, for some time, the home visiting programs really gained popularity in the late 90s, early 2000s. These programs initially started under United Way and then transitioned to the public schools in the early 2000s.
And typically, how long do these grants run? Do we know? Any data on that?
This grant, the GOC grant, started with the formation of the Local Management Board, which was, I think, 1993?
Over 20 years ago.
Yeah. Yep. And we've had peaks and valleys with funding. There was a time in the early 2000s where there was considerable funding, and we had a lot of grant-funded positions under the Local Management Board. After-school programs, we had, like, staff that were overseeing those throughout the county. So that was probably at our height, and maybe eight positions. Now we have two, and then this is a half position.
So the position's funded by the grant. If the grant goes away, the position goes away.
Historically, that's how it's been.
So the contractual positions?
Correct.
And we don't have anybody currently doing this work? Who's doing this work now?
The, for the Open Table Program, that's a new program.
That's new?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the new staffing request for the Open Table Program Coordinator and authorize the Board President to sign the State Assurances Document and the Certificate Regarding Lobbying.
Second.
Have motion and second that we adopt the Open Table Program Coordinator and authorize the Board President to sign the State Assurances Document and the Certificate Regarding Lobbying. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies. So it's National Women's Month, I'm just making an observation. So far this morning, there's been all women making presentations, and the one man that came up here never said a word.
He knows better.
Smartest man in the room. Next item on the agenda is Department of Finance and Budget Service Charge for Semi-Annual Real Property Tax. Director Strand.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget. Background: The county is required to allow certain taxpayers to pay their annual real property tax bill in two installments, provided the county is their principal residence. One installment is due September 30, 2022, and the other is due December 31, 2022. The county may charge a service charge on the second installment. The service charge has two components. One is to recoup three months of lost interest due to delay in receiving the revenue, and the other is to cover administrative costs incurred as a result of processing two payments instead of one. The administrative charge will be calculated at 10% of the lost interest charge. As in prior years, the maximum service charge allowed by law is 1.65%. The maximum was calculated when the semi-annual legislation was approved. It assumes a 6% interest rate loss. Discussion: As required by the annotated code, the Board of County Commissioners must set the annual service charge rate. The county currently earns .065% annually on its operating cash. The interest rate and administrative charge of 10%, .0065% would result in an annual charge of .0715%. Since the delay in receiving the revenue is three months, the service charge added to the second tax payment for fiscal year 2023, if approved, would be .01787%. In FY '22, the Board waived the annual service charge, which was .00 the prior year. Fiscal impact: This fee generates approximately $8,800 for the county on an annual basis and adds about .32 to the second installment tax bill for the average property tax owner. Conclusion, recommendation: It is recommended that the BOCC either approve the service charge rate for fiscal year '23 tax bill, tax year 2022, of .01787, or waive the annual service fee, and instruct Finance and Budget to submit that rate to the Department of Assessments and Taxation for approval.
Mr. President, I make a motion to waive the annual service charge fee and instruct Finance and Budget to submit that rate to the Department of Assessments and Taxation for approval.
Second.
So I have a motion and second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Strand.
Thank you.
Now, ask Edie Dr. Curry to come up and join me for the next.
So item five is Department of Budget and Finance. Board of Education requests to increase FY 2022 restricted budget. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Favorite time of year?
Maybe for you.
Background: The Board of Education is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approve approval of a budget adjustment for federal awards and other programs that were not outlined in the Board of Education's operating budget in fiscal year 2022. Discussion: The attached memo details the request. In summary, the BOE requests an increase revenues and expenditures as shown in Attachment A. There is no fiscal impact to the county for this action. Conclusion, recommendation: Staff recommends that the BOCC approve the budget adjustment.
So you have before you a memo which outlines an increase of $1.1 million of restricted funds to our fiscal year 22.
Edie, I might have missed it, but did you introduce yourself?
No, my name is Edith Hutchins, Chief Financial Officer.
I could have missed it.
For Calvert County Public Schools.
We know who you are, but...
So again, $1.1 million is in the budget that is the memo that is presented before you, along with a summary that outlines the grant funds and the intended uses of each of those awards. So we are requesting your approval to increase our operating budget by $1.1 million for these restricted funds.
And these are the monies you received last year because of the pandemic, correct?
Hmm, one of them is.
One, yeah.
The American Rescue Plan for homeless children.
Right.
Other items are, in one case, Title I is money we get every year. The $300,000 that is shown here is in addition to what is already in our adopted budget book for fiscal year '22. Other items here aren't really pandemic money. One of these you see is Blueprint for Maryland's Future Infant and Toddlers Programs. So there are various sources, but only one of these is as a result of the pandemic.
Are all of these funds restricted, or is there a combination of restricted and unrestricted?
These are all restricted.
Okay, because the Page Two states, and that's what I was looking for, because Page Two reads, "Request to adjust fiscal year unrestricted and restricted budgets."
Because Page One dealt with the unrestricted grant. So there was a Page One to what was submitted to you, but Page One is not provided here today.
So we did not get Page One?
Correct.
So it wasn't submitted, okay. All right, that helps alleviate some of the confusion, thank you.
Page One deals with the additional funding requested for transportation.
Got it.
And that's the agenda item that was added, so we'll go into that one next.
Do any of these require any future funding follow-up being spent by us?
No.
You're just reconciling FY '22. You're just reconciling FY '22.
Correct.
Is the action today.
So, so these things have already been basically taking place?
Right.
Okay.
They're just amending their budget.
All right.
So the Infants and Toddlers Program Blueprint for Maryland's Future, that's part of the Kerwin's blueprint?
When you say part of the Kerwin's blueprint, it is the blueprint as we know it, yes. But it's not unrestricted funding, so it's not money we're getting as part of our state aid for Kerwin.
Right, the blueprint to Kerwin is a whole lot more than that. This is just...
Right, I guess I didn't realize that had already started in '22. Yes, that's what got my attention. Because I didn't think we were gonna start that until next year or so. But you already received some blueprint funds in '22.
Yes, teacher salary incentive grant, special education, mental health coordinator. So yes, we did receive four pots of Kerwin.
Oh yeah, I forgot about the teachers' grant. Any other questions?
We're gonna be moving from this to the work session on the budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is just for this item.
Not at this point.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Make sure I get my motion right. Motion and a second to approve the budget adjustment submitted by the Board of Education. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next?
Next item was the item that was added to the agenda, which is the first page that Commissioner Gadway was referring to. So I'll go ahead and move right into that memo. Background: The Board of Education is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approval of a budget adjustment. Inner category transfer requires the BOCC approval. Discussion: The attached memo details the request. In summary, the BOE requests to make changes, to make the following changes. Fiscal impact: There is no fiscal impact to the county for this action. Staff recommends that you approve the budget adjustment.
Which one is this? Is this someone from February? Okay, that was a separate memo.
Correct, okay, sorry.
So we're requesting your approval to make an additional transfer from the contracted salaries to the, I'm sorry, from salaries, instructional salaries, to contracted psychologists. This is expected to be our last request for this year to provide funding for those services for the duration of this fiscal year, as well as to transfer funds from the instructional salaries category to the transportation category to provide additional funds needed there to pay for overtime for mainly our bus assistants, but also for office staff in transportation, as well as to help pay for those increases to the bus drivers for this year.
And there's one more. Certified teacher salary?
The transfers to transportation are coming from the instructional salaries category. So that's the instructional assistant salary account as well as the teacher salary account.
Right, and this too is an amendment to FY '22?
Yes.
How many current instructors do you guys have?
Teachers in total?
Teachers in total, actually instructional educators.
Do you know off the top of your head?
Generally, we say 1,100, something like that. There are many of the teacher category who aren't in the classroom.
Mm-hmm.
Who might be trainers and content area specialists and things like that.
I think 1,188 sticks in my head for some reason. They may not be.
The last audit came in at 1444 with 600-plus administrative. And I'm just, when I see, when I see monies being transferred out of instructional salaries into other categories, the other category's been funded already, and I'm wondering how many teachers, or I'm sorry, how many educators' positions that we in the state are funding that remain vacant from year to year in order to provide this money that can be moved to different categories, if that's the case? Maybe I'm not verbing the question correctly. How many vacancies do you guys have at this point for teachers?
Currently, as far as teacher positions go, we have about 22 teaching positions that are vacant.
Regular classroom teaching.
Gotcha.
We have none that go year to year.
Correct.
We would fill them all.
All right.
And then we have constant turnover all the time. Someone moving away, someone deciding to have a health problem, they have to leave in the middle of the year, so we're just always a turn.
All right, overall positions throughout the Board of Ed, 2,100, 20, somewhere in that ballpark?
We have actually about 2,400.
2,400.
Of constant contract positions. We have extra duty assignments, which are different from this, so in total, we issue over 3,000 W-2s a year, but about 2,400 contract positions.
All right, that's a new number I hadn't heard before. I've heard quite a few different numbers from different things. I've heard quite a few different numbers from different things, and I... I'll ask more questions when I get to the actual budget and whatnot, but I'm getting ahead of myself.
Sharon, this budget adjustment doesn't have a number.
It, the number does not run through the Calver County government's books, it's just on the books of the Board of Education. So, it's not assigned a county number.
I'm just used to seeing numbers for budget adjustments.
In total, we're looking at $75,000 from instructional salaries to the other instructional cost category, $372,000 from instructional salaries to the transportation category.
Any other questions?
If I just might add a postscript, how much we have to appreciate our Transportation Department this year. They have a staff of about eight, seven of them, I believe, are certified to drive school bus, and there were many periods where they started their day driving bus before coming to the office, and after that, and ended their day driving the bus. And that included a director and a supervisor who've got no additional pay for driving bus every day.
Doc, kind of on the bus thing, as we're winding down this year, with the adjustments made and everything, do you see any interruption going into September?
I would hope not. We have, we still don't have the depth of substitute drivers we would like to have, and we find that out as we get into the spring with field trips and athletic trips and things like that. First priority is that everyone's running their usual morning and afternoon run, and then there are those available to do a midday field trip, like with chest packs and things like that, but they've got to be within the last run of the morning and the first run of the afternoon, because we don't have, we don't have a whole lot of subs to cover.
Are the contractors giving any feedback back of how they're feeling going in? Because, I mean, ultimately, they're the ones that are, you know, doing headcount, you know? I mean, do they, I'm sure they have a process, I'm sure, hey, you guys, when we come back September, do I have you, do I have this, you know? I mean, that was something I've never seen before. And, you know, the single parent, or even both parents working, that was traumatic. I mean, and there was principals trying to play, you know, traffic cop, and, I mean, it was something, you know, so what can we do today to make sure we're not there in September? I guess what I'm saying.
Well, you know, that was huge, and certainly, we've done it, we've made some significant increases in bus driver compensation, almost 25% hourly increase, plus a promise of eight hours a day. So, we've done about as much as we can on our end to make the job attractive, as far as who wants to substitute drive, you know, that's, you know, so many of those temporary jobs, I think people are finding, finding are hard to have a good, a good hold on on how many available. We still, with a limited number of subs, we could still have occasions this year, before the year's out, when a bus driver needs to take off or gets ill and the bus that run doesn't run.
So, we're that then still?
Yeah, we still have a little bit of that going on.
So, those subs, are they, you finding the subs, or does the contractor have a list of subs?
Well, we work collaboratively, but we do the training. It's really their employees, so it's beholden of that to them to recruit hard, but we also take part in the recruiting and then the training.
And contractors are provided a list of available subs, so they make the calls to those individuals to see who's interested in subbing for them.
And so, the contractors themselves will sub.
Right. We just make sure that we have that information, we can get it out through communications and through economic development for people that are looking for something to do. Any other discussion on this budget amendment?
Just want to commend Dr. Curry for thanking them.
Good thing.
Yes, sir.
They're great folks, really.
Yes, sir.
It was, made for some long days for many months.
Yes, sir.
Can you just remind me, I didn't make a note earlier, how many instructional positions were there that you said you had?
We had 17.22 teachers, classroom teachers, along with five teacher specialists.
Vacancies?
No, 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 I'm sorry. The overall instructional staff that you have, it was 1,100 and something, I think you said?
Eleven, do you have a number?
Roughly.
I said over 1,100.
Okay.
Mr. Gadway said 1,180.
Yeah, 1,180 sticks in my head for some reason.
1,180, thank you, I'll go with that. Thank you.
Don't hold me to that.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we approve the budget transfer for the Board of Education totaling $367,000 for FY 22. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next.
Next item on the agenda is a Board of Education Funding Work Session. I'll go ahead and read the memo and go through the presentation, and then I'll open it up for questions that you all might have. Background, the Department of Finance and Budget has prepared the Staff Recommended Budget for Fiscal Year 2023. As of today, we have a balanced budget. The Board of Education is requesting $143,878.899, an increase of $11,113,224 above maintenance of effort. We are still in the early stages of fiscal year 2023 budget process. The public hearing for the Staff Recommended Budget is scheduled for March 22, 2022, and any commissioner requests changes would be incorporated into the commissioner's budget. Fiscal impact, staff has included sufficient funding to cover MOE with additional discretionary funding and the staff recommended budget. The State of Maryland adopted a new MOE calculation in April of 2021. The required MOE funding is approximately $132.8 million, which for this year is based on a three-year student enrollment average of 15,333. Conclusion, the Board of Education will be present to discuss their FY 2023 Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget. So, again, the purpose of the meeting today is to discuss the Board of Education Superintendent FY 23 budget and discuss some funding options. County funding to the Board of Education is the county's largest tax-supported expense. For anyone who's listening that doesn't know, the Board of Education Board are elected officials and that act on behalf of the Calver County Public Schools. School boards are governed by state law and establish the policies by which local schools are governed. In addition, the board is tasked with representing the public's voice in public education and setting standards for achievement. Enrollment, Calver County School enrollment is projected to increase by 356 students as of September 2022. After September 2020 declining enrollment due to COVID of 681 students, enrollment increased slightly by 53 students as of September 2021. You will not see any other changes of this magnitude in this chart. Recent history of funding, this slide details three recent years of the county's funding formula with the Board of Education. This formula determined the funding that the county provided to the BOE. For today, I direct your attention to the bottom of the schedule to show the significant increases in dollars and percentage terms of recent years. Staff included $138.5 million in the staff recommended budget based on the expired funding formula, and provides $5.75 million over maintenance of effort, which is the minimum the county has to contribute per the State of Maryland. So, we're going into the options now. So, option one is to provide maintenance of effort. Enrollment is important for this chart because it determines the amount that the county is legally required to fund the Board of Education. The legal requirement is referred to as the Maintenance of Effort Funding, or MOE. MOE, the state law, requires the funding per student to carry forward into future years. Calver County continues to fund the Board of Ed in excess of MOE. This year's excess is $5.7 million if the B O C C decides to fund at the $1.138.5 million.
Sharon, on that, on that slide, do you have the individual county contribution per student on what MOE, and then to what we've been doing? Do you have those two numbers? And I should have asked you that earlier, not to put you on the spot.
I don't have it with me, but it has been calculated, yes.
Okay.
But I can provide that information to you.
I know it used to be around 8,000, I thought, per student, and I didn't know what the new calculation was.
It is at least eight, and I'm seeing, but I don't know the exact number.
I think it's 8,800.
And I know that's not the state contribution, just our piece, so...
Correct.
That's why that enrollment number is so important, but I just couldn't remember what that number was.
I can edit it for you.
Thank you.
What is the date of the cutoff for the enrollment again? There's a date that the state goes...
When does the number count? September 30th?
Is it November 30th?
September.
Oh, September 30th, okay.
That's a hard date.
Yeah.
Well, and this year, we're actually, I believe, as of February, does the number 15,84, ring any bells, as far as the amount of students? Is it, I was told as of February, that's where the numbers are as far as the schools, so there's already a built-in slush of 2.2 million in there, based on the overage that we're going to be having to pay because of the state mandate of the average of the last three years. Is, we're having to pay it 15,333, but there's actually, from what I understand, there's less than 15,100 currently enrolled. So, there's already some extra padding in there for that.
I'm, I'm lost on that. I mean, where's that information?
The 15,333.
Yeah.
I shared with you the last time I was here that the state is using a three-year moving average calculation of enrollment, which excludes the September 30, 2020 enrollment from that count. So, they look at 18, 19, and this past September to calculate that 15,333.
Thank you, Edie.
You're welcome.
So, there's no information in this presentation of what makes up the $11 million increase request?
There is in the superintendent's presentation, which was done in January and will be done again tonight. But we can tell you about that.
That would be good.
Off the top of my head, 3.4 million is for transportation, for our bus drivers, the eight hours, plus the increases based on CPI factor. We also have an increase of about 1.2 million for future ready.
Future ready means our one-to-one technology program, and we lease laptop computers for the students. We have rolling over three years.
We've got about $2.5 million increase for salaries, and that's across all categories, as well as a $1.1 million projected increase for utilities. That's our water and sewer, our electricity, that kind of thing. And then some minor increases like $580,000 for the athletic field maintenance, which we have budgeted for for '23 for the first time.
Oh, you got my turf field down there, Edie? Oh, right, and only for 583, that, you're doing good there, I like that.
Some million for our budget. And then the Board of Education has requested some new positions, for guidance counselors, some gifted and talented teachers, so that's an additional 400, $500,000 to our budget, but then 2.1 million increase for fixed charges as well.
So, that includes how many counselors?
Four counselors.
And going to which school? Do we know what schools they go to?
Do you know the schools?
Well, the primary concerns during the feedback so far has been for the larger elementary schools.
Wendy Hill, I think, was one of them.
Wendy Hill, I mean, Wendy Hill was the first one advocated for, we need another counselor, there are just over 600 students. We have a couple of other elementary schools that are at six or almost six, and maybe Wendy Hill knows.
Are you averaging one guidance counselor per 250 students?
No.
Now, what is the, what are you averaging?
Well, every elementary school, for the most part, of our 12 elementary school standard staffing for guidance counselors, one. And, you know, the, there's mutual is under 400 students, but most of our elementary schools are just right around 500.
So, you're really understaffed in that area?
Well, now, let's say understaffed means that number, 250, is the recommendation of the National Association of School Counselors on how many guidance couns, school counselors you should have per pupil.
Right.
So, just as every professional association recommends how many, the School Psychologist Association, for instance, probably has a number on, you know, this is how many school psychologists you should have in the school district based upon your enrollment. So, every professional association has a recommended guide. We are nowhere near one school counselor for 250. Patuxent High is pretty close, and that they have four counselors, a little over 1,000 students. All of our middle schools have two, two counselors, like I said, all of our elementary schools, except for Patuxent, for pat appeal, for the most part, have been given one school counselor traditionally. It's, you know, this whole budgeting process, every department, as we work on budget, and every department submits what they would like to have versus what they have right now. We keep a board in our workroom where we note all the new staff people would like to have, and that generally adds up to more than 40 more people, folks would like to have. And for this particular budget, as you may be aware, when it was first presented, it was presented as, there's no new people here. This is a budget that sustains our present staffing and as it is. And it pays for these additional things, like additional costs of transportation and so on. It was the board's decision last week, which will eventually becomes the board's budget as of Thursday, to ask Ms. Hutchins to make room in the budget without increasing the cost from the superintendent's budget for six additional staff to gifted teachers and four guidance counselors. We still have a lot of other staff that folks would like to have, but it's just difficult to afford.
The 3.4 million for transportation, I know that we split the cost with you with this last bus situation, is this 3.4 us paying for all of it, or is, are you coming up with some of the budget?
Well, it's just now a big, a part of our budget. It's just, it's all one, so it's partly paid for by state dollars, partly paid for by the county allocation. We're no longer carving out what we did this year.
And Edie, I think you threw something out there after the counselors that I missed.
Fixed charges, 2.1 million for fixed charges, so...
What are fixed charges?
That would be our benefits, so that's health insurance, that is the normal cost for the employee's pension system. That by itself has a projected increase of about $1.5 million for next year.
Is that OPEB as well?
No.
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 What's your OPEB projection?
We don't, we don't have a projection in our budget for OPEB.
The county budgeted, budgets their portion.
Okay.
And previously, when we had, had the funding formula agreement, we agreed, once we get to a certain amount of carryover, we would, we would also put a bunch of that carryover into...
Now, all the teachers and staff, they're all caught up on their steps now, right?
Yes.
So, the 1.2 for computers, you said, is leases? That's every year?
Yes.
So, why is that a new item?
We have to replace those three-year leases, they're good for three years. We're upgrading the devices, and you can chime in, for our high school students, so with the new lease that's going in place for next year, those are upgraded devices because the devices students had before were not of the caliber that the students need.
It's also, it's also an increase over last year because last year, we paid up a couple of years. When we, but when we, with the kind of year we had, the previous school year with fund balance, we used some of that to pay in advance for more than one year on the lease, so we, so we didn't have... So we, so we didn't have as much in last year's budget, if I'm saying this correctly.
A half million.
Yeah, we, we only, we didn't have to put as much in last year's budget because we were pa, paid up in advance for a couple of years on the lease. Now, this is a year where we're paying on all three leases each. Uh, we roll in three-year leases, so our laptops for the students are renewed every, every three years. One-third of them is, is new. And the high school quality and capability we've determined is just not enough, so we're upgrading what we're getting from high school.
But that should already be in your budget. It's an annual cost.
What should already be in our budget?
The computer leases.
It is in our budget, but it's this much more, it's an insignificant increase over last year.
Insignificant, one point two million?
I said, no, it, it is a significant increase over last year, not insignificant.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I heard you say insignificant, I said, no.
So, so that amount is actually for, I was, that's actually for the students' computers. I was under the impression it was going against some of the findings from the last audit, which showed the, a third of your servers being inadequate as far as security goes, I thought that's what that was going toward. So where is that, how's that being addressed?
I don't know, what you're talking about, about the third of our servers.
Forty-six out of a hundred and twenty-six servers without malware and proper security protocols in place.
That, that's, you know, we've already, um, worked on that this year.
Okay. All right.
We're, we're, that's already.
I thought that's what that was, I'm sorry.
That's a Matt Potique question.
Well, yeah, our IT director could better explain that.
Okay.
But indeed, we, we, we have invested a great deal.
That's part of the adopted budget.
Yeah, and, and, it's, it's been a part of this current year.
All right, glad it's already taken care of.
Yeah.
Doc, do you guys have like a schedule check, so, so like, um, Mel's done a great job with our health benefits of trying to find, you know, that, that price just keeps going up and going up to try to find savings in there and, you know, talking different options. Do you guys have a routine to where you periodically kind of do a wellness check of your health system? Because you run separately than we do, you know, to kind of try to find savings in there?
Our biggest improvement there was when we started bidding the health insurance contract. Um, as a result of that bid, a few years ago, we actually changed prescription drug providers. Um, since then, we've gone back to Care First, so we've seen the biggest cost containment benefit with the bidding process. So we're not seeing the kind of increases, percentage increases in our insurance costs that we did prior to bidding. And I think we started that back in two thousand and fifteen, if that, if I'm not mistaken. So we have seen improvement with that.
Do you guys ever talk like with our departments back and forth, um, to just kind of just, you know, because basically we're all trying to do the same thing? You know, we're trying to get all our, you know, employees the best health that we can and as economically as we can. Do you guys kind of compare notes from time to time to what's working and what's not? I mean, I know we're separate entities, but you know, to try to, is there anything that maybe we can help each other with?
Well, we're separate entities, but as far as the health insurance goes, we are collective in that respect because I believe the county government benefits from the administrative cost fees that we get from Care First. So as a result of that bidding process, you guys experienced lower admin cost fees because you get the same fees we get.
Where you guys benefit is you, um, your, yours is negotiated through the unions and things like that, correct? Like your insurance, you, you have to negotiate that.
Well, many of the specifics of what, uh, what we're buying.
The types of benefits, yes.
Many of the specifics of the benefit.
Right.
Are in contract.
Right.
But the provider is not.
So we have to go to the providers and say, here's, you know, the co-payers and things like that.
But you have to negotiate the benefits with the teachers and that type of thing with the two different unions.
Yes.
Do you guys ever see any rebates back, like sometimes we have? And, uh, so how do, how do you guys apply those? Do you, um?
As an offset to our cost.
Okay.
So with the prescription drug plan, those rebates were coming quarterly. Um, now that we're back with Care First, that only comes as an offset once a year when they do the settlement.
And there are, and we have provisions within our employee contracts that if we get, um, uh, at the end of the year, as the, um, level things out, and we get, if we get some money back, if we get enough back, uh, we, there'll be a, a premium holiday.
Okay, which we have done, right.
So those employees that, uh, that are paying a premium for their share of the insurance will might have a couple of paydays where they don't have to pay.
Well, and it's an incentive because, you know, to, um, if, if you're not really, really sick, you know what I mean? You know, in, in the past, we had a problem on our side, emergency use visits. They were killing us, you know, emergency, going to the emergency room is just such an astronomical fee, you know, and to try to incentivize, you know, employees to, hey, you know, maybe give it a day to see how, you know what I mean? It, you know, but it was, um, so.
They appreciate co-pay for that.
Yeah, it, it, it was a major cost to us, so.
And we did the same thing. We had, uh, negotiated a slight increase in the emergency room co-pay. But we also switched over this past year to the Blue Choice Advantage, um, because that was a cost savings as well. For those who had PPO, if you're visiting a physician that accepts both, then Care First pays the lower, um, amount, the VCA amount to the provider instead of the higher PPO amount. So that translates to savings to us as well.
Did you say your premiums are going up?
Our premiums, no, I didn't.
Well, the two point one is for insurance, and so what's it for, for insurance?
Oh, the cost, I was, okay, so I said that the largest part of that increase was for the normal cost for the teacher's pension system. Um, that rate went up quite a bit, almost one percent on a one hundred and twenty-eight million dollar payroll. That's easily a one point two million dollar increase for the normal cost by itself. Then you have your normal cost increases with FICA taxes as your salaries increase, so do your FICA taxes. And then, uh, we had a minor increase in health insurance, but we cut that to provide the funding for the additional positions the board asked for.
Yeah, so fixed charges captures all of those, and I, we might have mentioned it includes health insurance, but that's not a big part of, of that increase.
I have to ask if I don't know the detail.
In past budgets, or, or may I please ask a question, sir? In past budgets, eighty-five percent, salaries?
Salaries and benefits combined.
Global, the whole budget.
Salaries plus social security, insurance, retirement.
Yes.
Eighty, eighty-two cents on the dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In reference to the last audit, could, could you guys explain or give me a little bit of insight on what the issues were found, where components of the payments to the bus contractors did not reflect actual cost or could not be supported?
So specifically, they were talking about one of the factors that we use to ca, to calculate bus contractor pay, the maintenance and operations factor. They have told us that our factor, which is ninety-eight cents a mile, point nine eight nine four to be exact, we don't have anything that substantiates that rate, is what they're telling us. So we, at one point, had the second highest rate in the state. Since then, we've had about two other jurisdictions increase their maintenance and operations per mile factor to match ours, which tells us maybe it's not so unreasonable. But in any case, to address that, we are going to be meeting with the bus contractors, looking at their actual invoices and expenses related to what it costs to maintain a bus over a twelve-year service life, to try to determine a factor that we can support and provide to the state to say what we're paying is reasonable.
Great. And in addition, off the same document, could you, could you tell us who received, which, which five executives received the five hundred thousand dollar bonuses at some point in the past?
What five hundred thousand dollar bonus?
Um, state audit found that personal service contracts that provided unique employment benefits to five executive employees valued at a half million dollars were executed without board approval as required by state law.
Is that the two thousand and sixteen report you're looking at?
Yeah, state references back to those. So I was just curious, from back then, I see it wasn't repeated, it was one of the few things that wasn't repeated. So, just follow up on that so I can grasp.
So that goes back to two thousand and sixteen, that particular audit, and, um, allegations that were made about a previous executive team and the benefits they had in their individual contracts with the Board of Education, the superintendent, and four other members of his cabinet.
So that was an allegation, it looks like it was proven in the audit.
I cannot speak to that, so for me, it's an allegation, so.
It's, uh, and keep in mind, this is the legislative audit.
Right.
It's not the same as the annual financial audit.
Correct.
Two different things.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, and certainly that was an issue for administration before I arrived. And there was questions raised about whether that was appropriate or not, but I can't.
So we don't know who it was, or when, or, it was some, sometime previous to twenty sixteen?
It was a previous superintendent and four of his cabinet members. So a former executive team prior to Dr. Curry taking the position.
And are any of those four, so that superintendent sounded like it, and then, uh, did any of those four receive it? And, and or are they still in employment at the county today?
They are not currently employed with the county.
Or contracted?
No.
Okay. Thank you. In reference to some of your education numbers, I'm trying to figure out how, if you were to take hazard a guess, what would you say the average class size would be, student-teacher ratio? I've heard a lot of people say in the past, six, seven, eight years ago, ten years ago, it was in the twenties, now it's in the thirties.
That's not true.
And that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, it depends on the grade line.
Okay.
Um, we, uh, try to, uh, staff our elementary schools so that, uh, especially the, the lower grades have in and around twenty.
Okay.
K one, two in particular, um, that can, um, especially in our high po, high poverty schools, our Title I schools, we try to focus on that. Enrollment, uh, goes up and down, and, um, in some cases, you also have classroom, uh, size issues or your enrollment goes up after school starts. A good example might be, you might have, um, uh, kindergarten classes that started out at twenty-one, and every classroom for kindergarten would have a teacher and an instructional assistant. You might have started out at twenty-one, and suddenly you're at twenty-six in every class. And one way to handle that might be to, um, uh, add another kindergarten teacher, but school might not have a classroom in order to open up another kindergarten. So, uh, instead, you might give them another instructional assistant to help with the larger classes. For the most part, our elementaries are, are twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, K five, average. High school, a lot depends upon the schedule. Mid, and middle and high school both, a lot will depend upon how the schedule goes together. And, uh, and a high school teacher might have, uh, eighteen in one class and thirty in another. So it's, it's just, it's, we, we staff our high schools. It's a twenty, twenty-one, I think, is what we basically look at in terms of, here's how many students there are, here's how many teaching positions you get.
Well, and that's where I was going, that's where I was wondering, because.
That doesn't translate necessarily to how many's in every, your first period class and second period class.
I've, I've heard people come to me and saying they have over thirty, thirty kids in a classroom.
They might.
They might. And with that.
They might, based on the schedule.
Okay, and you said you have eleven hundred and eighty educators roughly, and just doing some rough math, if twenty-five percent of those are out sick and you have to pull them into somebody else, let's just say you only have staffing for eight hundred and eighty-five classrooms or whatnot. Eight hundred and eighty-five, or fifteen thousand eighty-nine divided by eight eighty-five puts us at a seventeen student-to-teacher ratio, uh, which seems really low in comparison to what we actually have, which is where I'm trying to figure out from a rudimentary level how many teachers to students we have. And if we've got that many teachers we're paying for, then why do we have classroom sizes that are larger than what they are?
Well, so, there's just so many different categories of teacher.
I'm going off of edu, the ones you categorize as educators.
I mean, we have a lot of, you don't need to do your math, we could show you a lot of paperwork that we use in order to figure out staffing for a school. But when you're just talking about straight-up elementary, middle, and high school teachers that get staffed to a school, we use a certain ratio, X number of students equals another teacher. Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two students, you get another teaching position. It's up to the school to decide how to, um, assign that teacher. But we also have teaching positions that don't have that same, don't fit into that, Alt-Ed. A county al, alternative education, uh, program might have four teachers and might have anywhere, might have thirty-five students for four teachers when they're maxed out. And rarely do they get that many. Our CTA program, they have, many of those programs have maximums of twelve in order to, to get the job done for that. We also have a lot of folks who are, who are classified as teachers who, um, um, might be half-time in working in curriculum, instruction, and coaching with other teachers and don't have students all day long. So you have a lot of different varieties of, of folks called teacher that, that not, don't necessarily, uh, have a class.
How about special education teachers? How many do you guys have on special education staff?
Off the top of my head, no, I don't know.
I would say, hmm, I might be improper to make a guess. I can't tell you this.
Okay.
Looked into those numbers when I first arrived here in Calver County in two thousand and fourteen. And Calver County had about two thousand and four or five been hit hard by the state for over-identifying special ed. Is that about the right year you think, two thousand and five?
About.
And, um, they had over-identified meaning that roughly twenty percent of the student population had an IEP. And the state said, uh, you are using special ed inappropriately, and you need to, uh, uh, fix that. Uh, several years later, I'm here, we are, ten percent of our students have IEPs, which is about state average, just under ten percent. And we have double the number of staff working in special ed as we had when we had twenty percent.
Right, and the reason why I bring it up, when I look at special ed category for instruction, for instructional, now granted, it's a big guess on my part, but guessing what their salary and compensation would be, and if everything was under salaries, it looks to me like there's over two, possibly three hundred special educators in that category. Overall, that would, I, I would assume that that would include, if that were the case, it would include not only your educators, but your aides and everybody else associated with that.
Yeah, yeah, instructional assistants as well.
Okay, so then when I sit there and I hear the person who said that they were the director of special education for the county at a CCAC meeting a week or two ago, explained that the special educators are supposed to be at a ratio of one to one seventy-five in the schools, that gave me a number of about eighty-seven, give or take, special ed teachers. And if each one had their own aide, then we'd be at a hundred and seventy-five, which is still a long ways away from that three hundred. That's why one of the questions I asked earlier was how many vacancies you have, because if we're paying for three hundred, if the state and us is paying for three hundred and you guys are only utilizing a hundred and seventy-five, then there's a hundred and twenty-five-person salaries that aren't getting spent on salaries. That's why I was asking those questions.
The, and, and special ed is, is not easily categorized as all being the same. At almost every grade level in an elementary school, uh, you will likely have a co-top class. That means.
Understood.
I teach third grade.
Right.
And there's also a special educator that pushes in and works with me and my students.
Right, because not all educators are special ed licensed and certified.
This is a special educator, moving in and teaching in regular classroom, not, not have a separate room where students with IEPs go to them.
Right.
But they, but they work in the classroom with, specifically with the students who have IEPs that are in regular ed.
Right, and I, I learned all that, I learned all that at the CCAC meeting a couple of weeks ago and was educated on that. But it's just the numbers, I was trying to make the numbers work, and it was just kind of tough because according to her, out of total student population, the amount should be one seventy-five to one, which boils down to that eighty-some number. I was just trying to figure out how many you actually had.
Yeah, I'm not sure what else, you know, you also have a number of other, uh, specialists beyond just the regular special education. Behavior specialist, behavior tax. Speech therapist might be included among them as well, I'm not sure.
Gotcha, so I can unders, so I could better understand the, the future budget. Could you guys send me over a line item list, whether digitally or on paper, probably be a whole lot easier on digital format, to send over line item expenditure buzz, you know, expenditure list for the last couple of years? Or something that I can drill down on so I can better understand this?
You want to see, like, the, the report that the board gets each month, an expenditure status report?
I don't, I don't know what they get, so I wouldn't be able to say.
They get a report by category that shows each account in that category, so it ranges from salaries down to equipment.
Can each one of those categories be drilled down into a subcategory and continued down?
Pass this in, please, see if this is what he's.
That is a sample of what the Board of Education gets each month. Each category is on a separate page, and it itemizes the accounts from various salary accounts to contracted services, supplies, equipment, for each category.
It doesn't, it doesn't have any vendors on here either, though, does it?
So then you're looking for, which was requested, an expenditure audit trail, which details every single expense we paid.
I got a lot of spare time on my hands.
And that request was made, I think, on Friday for an expenditure audit trail. So as I explained to Ms. Strand, we can get you an audit trail from April of 2015 up through, if you want a whole month, the end of last month, we did a software conversion, thank you, in 2015. So we do not have details prior to audit, April of 2015. We just brought the data over in summary for each month, so we can get to an audit trail for, what, about seven years, six or seven years?
Super. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Plus, these documents are always posted on our, with our, with our board meeting agendas. The attachments are all there from way, way back. You can go look at all Pat's board agendas and see the attachments and see these kinds of status reports.
So if you go to slide seven, in revenue trends, it says that 23 ask is 9 million over previous, but today you're telling us it's 11.
No, the 11 million is what I believe Ms. Strand was saying was above maintenance of effort, correct?
Correct. So currently, the superintendent's budget includes a $9 million increase in what they're requesting. If you calculate the maintenance of effort, which is, which was updated in April of '21, which is our legal requirement to fund the Board of Ed.
So the MOE requirement is 9 million?
No, the MO, I'm sorry, so.
MOE went up by 2 million, I think, is what you're saying. Is that what you're saying?
That was over the average of the three years, right?
And that's the difference in from the 11 to 9, is that what you're saying?
So the MOE, what we're required to fund the schools.
Yes.
Is $132.8 million.
And they're asking for 143.
Asking for 143, so that's where you get the 11 million dollars.
But this says 9.
This says 9 because in FY '22, we funded them 134.8.
So the 9 is our number compared to the previous year funding. She's taking our number and comparing it to MOE that you might have, that you've paid. The minimum required by law is MOE. Let's make sure everybody understands that, the minimum required by law.
And we've never done that, yet.
Oh, you used to a few times.
Not yet. Not me.
We missed steps.
Not me, not yet.
That was about 11.
20, 11?
Nine.
During, during difficult financial times.
Well, guess what, I'll, I'll tell you about that a little later. So the state's going to give you 11, according to this chart, this year. Because this chart says your state allocation's going to go up 11. So you're looking for 22 million in new funding for next year.
And I should have asked for 27. And I'll tell you that why.
That's not even funny.
The blueprint, the blueprint, one of the requirements of the blueprint is that our teachers demonstrated 10% raise between FY '19 and FY '24. That's still muddy, and still some things being worked out on just exactly how you calculate that. But we haven't, we haven't even negotiated with our unions, how, you know, to reach an agreement on how much more is needed by FY '24 to, to meet that requirement. So that's, that's not in there at all. I'd also point out that she used the old formula that we agreed to, MOU that we had at one time. Had we, and I'll point out that last year, because the state asked, the commissioner required that you fund us no less than the previous year. So for FY '22, you couldn't fund us any less than FY '21. We, we didn't push, let's go ahead and continue with the formula. We had carryover because of the nature of how things went with COVID, so we had a significant carryover. So we just said, we'll ask you for $1 more, and we can handle things for FY '22 based upon the carryover.
Because what was that surplus?
Oh, that was.
For last year, the anomaly, $10 million.
Yeah. So I'm tired of hearing that we only gave you a dollar, like, like we made you suffer, because you ended up with a $10 million surplus.
But again, in a year that was an anomaly, so we're not the only ones who faced that.
And if we'd have followed MOE that year, we would have cut you $5 million. So the state really saved you.
Also, let me also add, though, if we had just allowed the MOU and the formula that we had agreed to previously to go another year, it would have been about $3 million more, rather than $1 more.
Well, we weren't going to do that, so.
Yeah, I know, I know. So, but, and if we had done that, and we applied that to this year, we'd be talking $9 million.
But based on student population, we should have cut you $5 or $6 million.
And based on it right now, we're still 2 million over.
Let me give you, a lot of folks, I'm not sure how many are aware of this as well. Calver County is the second wealthiest county in Maryland by, as measured by median household income. And it is the, in the top 20 in the United States as far as median household income. Our property tax rate in Calver County, I think, is seventh or eighth lowest. Our per pupil expenditure is consistently $1,000 lower than the state average. We spend on a per pupil basis, last time I saw per pupil accounting, the state average was something like $15,800, all, all, all sources, and Calver County's is $14,800. And it's been pretty, pretty consistently always below the state average in our per pupil expenditure. So that's another way to look at.
Well, I also have heard that, on the opposite end of that spectrum, that Baltimore has one of the highest per pupil expenditures in the nation, however, has one of the lowest in graduation of competency in math and English. I'm just saying, that's, that's what I'm being told, that's what I'm being heard, I've heard that for years. So the amount spent per pupil, in my opinion, doesn't always equal the success rate.
Obviously not.
Right.
Been doing really well.
Right.
We've been spending much less.
Well, but in the same token, we, we at Calver County Schools have seen a significant nosedive in ratings from, since you've been, well, let me back up, I don't want to make that sound, I don't want to make that sound accusatory. But over the last eight to 10 years, I understand that we went from one of the top three schools in the state to now ranked 11th.
I don't know where you get that, sir.
Okay.
The test scores, the state test scores, the last time we had a legitimate state test was in the spring of '19. Spring of '20 was the beginning, we were out, pandemic. Spring of '21, we were just in a hybrid, no state test. We're going to get a legitimate statewide state test with everyone present this spring.
So where did we rank in that last?
In '19, we had the highest 10th grade English scores in the state, number one. And in all other grade levels, we were in the top five, state test score wise. Now, you can get some of these online rating systems and stuff like that, and that's why I brought up the, the cost. Somebody sent me a link to one of those that showed that we were kind of in the middle. And I looked at the factors that that particular organization used, and it was a lot about how much money you spent. That particular organization, so you just have to be careful and dig in to, to what is being used. But I can tell you, student performance wise, we have not gone down at all. FY '19 was my fifth year here. And I don't know what other measure you might use to say we've gone down.
I'm, you know, I do a fair amount of research, I do poke and.
Be glad to look at anything we've got.
I absolutely will get down, we'll get with you on that, and I'll share my data, you share your data, and we'll, we'll have a cup of coffee.
Yeah, the last two years, there's just been, you know, it's been crazy, there's not been much in the way of legitimate measures of student performance.
So in 24 jurisdictions in this state, you're telling us we're below average on spending per student?
Yes.
But according to Mako analysis coming to blueprint, there's only five counties in this state that have funded their school systems at a level that which blueprint won't have significant impact. So if we're in the top five in spending, but we're in the below average for per pupil, that's an interesting.
Yeah, there, I mean, certainly there have been, yeah, I've, I've seen those, and they, they say Calver County's in pretty good place. A lot of it has to do, I think, with community wealth and paying your fair share. And so that's why we're in good, good, good shape there with, I believe, where there are other, other counties that have a whole lot more in the way of taxable, perhaps, community wealth, aside from residents. And they are perhaps viewed as not adding up what they should.
Can you elaborate on paying your fair share?
Well, that's just my interpretation.
Well, I know, you just said it, that's why I'm asking.
That's my interpretation, I'm trying to figure out, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. And it has generally shown that there are, there are a number of counties that are going to have to pay up a lot. And Calver County has not been there.
So it just doesn't correlate in my head, and I'm not that smart.
That's, these are Mako data and stuff like that, someone.
If we're in the top five funding our school system, but you're, you say the numbers show we're below average of 24 jurisdictions in the state of our per pupil.
Each of those is different numbers.
Dr. Curry, may I, please, just, I'm going to go back on the macro level. It's fair characterization, characterization, 60% comes from the county, 40% comes from the state. So maybe some of this data that you're referring to comes from the state, these authorities that we're talking about. So we have a plethora of information. So I'm just trying to guess.
I appreciate you pointing that out, and indeed, if the data shows, however, some organization inputs revenues and expenditures to calculating per pupil expenditure, and what the average is in the state, and that we spend less than the average, that's just one number. The calculations about, about the blueprint, yes, I, I understand, but there were some projections about, there were, folks viewed, the school districts viewed as in better shape to be able to support the blueprint than others. And Calver County was one of those, and perhaps should you not talk so much about numbers with, with Ms. Hutchins here beside me? She can maybe elaborate more on that, what that is about.
Well, I think too, you, you really need to look at the health of the whole system. So, so when I first started, the, the big elephant in the room was, was the OPEP account. And I caught a lot of grief for pointing out how underfunded it was. I caught a lot of grief publicly, personally, in the paper. And we needed to fund that account, and we did, and look at the health of it now. That kind of gets pushed to the side, you know, when the state was, was paying pensions. I came on as that was dwindling down, I believe now every county is at 100% of paying those pensions. That was, I think our piece is about $5 million, I believe, somewhere.
You're talking about the normal cost, yes.
So all that, you know, it's all, you know, we can say it's in this pocket and that pocket, but I'm more of a simple type guy. It's all coming out the same wallet. So when I look at the health of the whole piece of it, from, I think we're either upgrading or building schools now almost yearly, it feels like, maybe every three years is probably the accurate number, but it seems like every time we turn around. So I think the health of the whole thing, we're pretty healthy. I think our schools look really good, and I think our compensation packages, all the steps are restored. So I think, you know, we've weathered from one of the worst economies, when I first came on eight years ago, to seeing a pandemic that no one has ever had, and really, they, they go back to, what, the, the Spanish flu? It's the only thing they referenced back, or what was that, was it back in, what was it, Philadelphia that was the?
1914.
Thank you. That was the reference point, so we had no modern data to how to handle that, and then it went to laptops everywhere. So I think, you know, really, as a whole, it's a system to be proud of. I really do, and I think where we're trying to get to is how to afford it, you know? It's, it's, it's a big, it's a big request.
You know, when I meet with fellow superintendents, the larger districts, the, you know, they've got a lot more staff running, a whole lot more number projections for what's, what we've got to have to, to reach some of the goals of the blueprint, and the numbers just blow your mind to hear them talking about what they're going to need. And even though Mako and the other calculations suggest Calver County's in pretty good shape, it's, it, it's still, we're having a hard time visualizing where it's all going to come from. You're saying eight years, you know, you and I came on about the same time, and I started in the summer of '14. My first budget to present was in February of '15. And a week after I presented that budget based upon what the state was going to give us, new Governor Hogan made a presentation on his budget, he did not fund GCEI, which was a part of, a little extra money that came to Calver. And suddenly, we were $3 million short. And we had to, we were down four steps at that time. And that spring, we cut, we, we laid off, we didn't lay off, but we cut out 50 positions in the school district. And since that time, as you know, we've had some good years and good collaboration, cooperation, and we were able to fund all of our back steps. And our, another goal of blueprint is the beginning teacher salary has to be at $60,000 by '27 or '28, something like that. And we're, we're at 50 now.
You know, Doc, going back in time, you know, you're bringing my memory back, because you're right, we came on the same time. I remember, you know, because the steps were so far back, we had not received the Dominion money yet, and going to you and saying, can you front that step? Because, you know, we, we hadn't done a step in so long to waiting on that money, you know? And so, you know, it, it has been a journey, and hopefully we'll have county staff completely restored as well. You know, the, the, the big elephant in the room, though, is we know the Kerwin report, we know has teeth, and, you know, there's a lot of, and we don't really know the future, we, you know, in, in prior, prior budget conversations, we know that probably income tax is going to go down because it was artificially stimulated, we know about the Dominion money. So I think we're trying to present a realistic picture of, hey, we've got to this point, we'd like to maintain this point, we'd like to keep this level, but there's going to be some different challenges going forward that, that we've, have not seen yet, so.
And a big part of Kerwin is that it's focused on teachers. And certain teachers by a specific definition, that is those who work with students in the classroom. And we have a broader definition of who's a teacher in our teacher contract, it includes a whole lot more. So the state will be directing some of their funds that we're supposed to use for teachers, for, let's say, a 10% raise over a certain period. Imagine everyone else going to just stand to the side and say, well, good for teachers. All of our employees going to say, that's great, teachers are getting a raise, that's okay, we don't need anything more. Now, that's, it's probably going to be district wide, all employees are going to be looking to get some of the same benefits that Kerwin focuses mainly on, on what they define as teachers, so that adds to expenses.
I thought I remembered hearing something, because many other counties in the state aren't nearly as proficient as Calver seems to be in setting up different things like Police Accountability Board and Kerwin Implementation Committee. Did I hear something that the implementation was being pushed back by the state, either six months to a year, or something like that, because other counties weren't prepared for this?
There is, there's some legislation right now that I think is expected to be passed favorably that would move the dates out a little bit, because the overall board to govern Kerwin, the AIB got formed late, and it has to hire staff. And, well, we were supposed to give them a plan that would make them happy by the end of June, I think. And they haven't even given us any direction on what a plan should look like. So they've got a lot of work yet to do, so yes, there is, there, there is an expectation that some things will be punted out. an expectation that some things will be punted out. If not a year, maybe nine months, but maybe not all the pieces.
Right. But let the record show that we at Calvert managed to push through and figure out a way to make it happen. And so we're ready, correct?
We are, we're, we're ready with what there is to be done so far.
Right.
So Director Strahan, how much new revenue are you projecting in the 23 budget?
For us?
For us. Um, so I actually don't have that information right here in front of me.
I think last week you said 7 million.
Okay. Um, I will be presenting that tonight to you all um, as part of the staff recommended budget. However, based on the expired MAU is how we calculated the Board of Education's funding for this year, which is an increase of 5.7 million dollars and that has been included in the staff recommended budget.
I just wanna point out to Dr. Curry, we're only gonna get, according to her last week's projection, 7 million in new money.
Right.
Ponder that.
Right, so.
I, I remember asking Mike Hart when you got that $25 million check from, um, from the gas company. I said, I think I just got my first property tax check and it says 60% goes to schools. So we getting 60% of that, of, of, of that, that check as well? And it was told, no, no, that's nothing worked out.
Everybody.
Everybody.
It was, it was gone when it hit here.
And we have the same challenges you do. Our utilities aren't any cheaper. Our staff also deserves colas and raises and uh,
Utilities.
As I have added up in my head, you know, uh, the new request of us is 19 million dollars. Now, that went to 21 because I was only giving you credit for nine. So that request is actually 21 and we're gonna get 7 million in new money.
And our staff is still behind one step.
And our staff is still behind yours. You're, you're way ahead of us. So just so you know where we are, uh, we have a third of what's being asked of us. And our employees are just as deserving as yours. So. I have two, I have two off-budget questions. What's the current criteria to be, for a student to be on honor roll?
Well, that's a question that I have, have never been asked since I was a principal. So I couldn't tell you what it takes.
I thought it was 3.0.
I have to get back to you.
Well, when I was in school, you couldn't have anything less than a B. I heard that that's changed now and that's not true anymore. And my point is we keep lowering the standards. Teachers aren't really allowed to fail students anymore, you know, you can't test them anymore like we used to. And uh, at least last year, you got half your grade if you just showed up.
Everybody gets a trophy.
Everybody gets a trophy.
Yeah, I can find out what.
So I was just in, cause I just heard.
On honor roll, I don't know.
It's not the same anymore that it used to be. So I was just wondering. And the other question I have is I know that we've been in a program for a few years now introducing children that have additional needs into regular classrooms. And I'm hearing from teachers the challenge that that provides when they have in high school, students in their class that have been transferred from special needs schools that are operating at a third grade level in a 10th grade class. And how are they supposed to teach? To the point that one teacher told me, she had a student in her class that she was told, do not allow that child to have a pencil or scissors in their hands. That never let that child use anything but a crayon because of that child's history. So I just ask, how do we expect our teachers to teach our students with those kinds of issues in their classroom today?
Uh, that's a pretty broad question.
It is.
And um, you know, as we talked a little bit about class size, you know, and we talked a little bit about what used to be for honor roll. You know, I can reflect on what used to be my first year teaching. I taught self-contained elementary school, sixth grade, in the same room I had attended sixth grade, six, uh, 10 years before. And I had 42 children in 1974. Special ed was not yet invented. It was just coming out. So imagine the span I had of students. 42 kids and, and it was the entire sixth grade that I had every day, all day in one classroom. Now, things have changed a lot in the last 45 years and more. And um, the idea of an IEP is, is critical, but as it says, it's an individual education plan. So there isn't one particular way to do special ed. Calvert County has been criticized by the state in recent years for having too many students who are getting their services being pulled out and sent to a, a, a special room and need to be more pushed in when served in. So there's additional staff generally often going in to help them. Um, and we have to keep in mind if we have uh, a, a thousand kids with IEPs, roughly 950 of them are capable of earning a regular diploma academically.
And, and I wouldn't disagree with that.
So there, but you do have, certainly you do have, you know, you have that student who may be non-communicative, who gets to spend some time with regular kids uh, because, for the exposure to, if not, if nothing else, socialization as well as the, the content that's necessary for them, whether they're reading on that level or not. So there's a whole lot of complicated pieces to that question.
And I always go back to, you know, there was a period of time where we built schools with open designs. And that was supposed to be the greatest thing that there ever was. And now all we hear is we gotta replace those schools because that was the worst idea ever. I'm just concerned that this new program of integration is one of those items we may look back on one day and say, whoops. Because I, I, I admit that there are certain students with IEP that can be integrated in. But when I hear that you have a 16-year-old teenage boy in your class and you can only give him a crayon because of his behavioral issues, I just wonder about the other 26 kids in that class. And what are they being exposed to? And how is this teacher supposed to teach this individual at a third grade level? And are other students there that are at our 10th or 11th grade level, who's missing out is my concern. And I would hope that there's some line that we draw that an individual that can't be trusted with anything more than a crayon should not be in a class.
We wouldn't put them in a class.
Well, you are.
No, we wouldn't put them in class if we really thought that that would.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I would hope not, but the teacher tells me it's happened today in her class. And that this child is supposed to have an aide with them to help them. The aide is in and out because she also has other students that are distributed in other classes. So she's not there with this child all the time. And this teacher is concerned about her safety with a student that has that issue. And I just don't know how we allow that to happen. That's my concern.
I understand. And perhaps there could benefit from, uh, from a whole presentation from special ed folks or the commissioners on how some of that works.
I've heard very similar stories as well. Um, what is the precursor to an IEP? Is that a F IEP or what is the, what's right before that when the kids are younger? When the family is still involved? Bees, is there another category under that?
No.
I think he's looking for the origin of IEP.
Uh, there's something that, for example, I believe IEP is individual.
Education.
Eduv- educational plan. Before, sometimes when the kids are younger, before they become an IEP, they are, the school works with them and their parents more. And it's a family or? At what point, at what point do the schools, I guess, stop working with the parents? Because I get, well, that's not what I hear either.
An IEP has to be signed by a parent and it's renewed, it's renewed annually.
I hear the communications at times is very poor in the IEPs where the schools aren't telling the parents that this is where the child is going, this is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure this is the best venue for folks to talk about what I hear.
Okay, well, then come to the.
Because, because.
I'm going off of what your people told at.
My people, that's pretty broad.
I don't know the individual's name, but at the CKEC meeting a few weeks ago in the evening, which is a special ed meeting, was open to the public. They, they had individuals there from the schools. I do not recall the individuals' names off the top of my head. I could go back and probably pull some notes and find out. But when I have people that are saying that they're in charge of the special ed in the county school system, telling me something, that's what I mean by I hear.
Okay.
When I hear other parents come into those meetings and tell the people in those meetings that situation's similar to what Commissioner Hans was saying, that's what I mean by I hear.
Mr. President, excuse me, Cas. Mr. President, is it possible, maybe we could work session this? Because, you know, right now we really have budget folks here to maybe we'll get the people in the room that, um, and they can put some questions together and, you know, that way we're not just slinging it around and maybe it's all valid points.
I think, I, I think it'd be valuable for you to do because there are, as in any environment these days, there is the collision of people's rights. My child's rights, even though they might have some challenges. And your child's rights, even though they don't have those challenges. And sometimes they share space and how can, how can that get done? As far as if we could wrap up with the IEP business, IEP is, is the result of a referral for, generally the result of a referral for testing, for psychological evaluation. That psychological evaluation, then if it concludes, a student qualifies for a special education, then an I, the individual plan based upon that particular student's needs and strengths as well, gets developed. And it's the family around the table with the staff for every IEP. Before that, uh, it continues to be a school responsibility to work with every child and especially in the lower grades, to try all the possible interventions you can before you decide we need to have an evaluation. So you try a lot of other interventions to help the child. Uh, and one of the big parts, once again, to take us back to one of presumptions of the Kerwin Commission, is a big push for preschool, a big push for, uh, for pre-K, especially for low-income folks to be full-day pre-K. We, right now, we have mostly half-day pre-kindergarten. And there is this projection that, that early intervention, pre-kindergarten opportunity will reduce the need for special education down the line. That's, that's a big, broad projection with the folks who advocate for pre-K.
I'm not opposed to what Commissioner Hart said a moment, a moment ago about putting together a work session. However, I would like to say that unlike what you'd said, Dr. Curry, I believe it would be valuable, valuable for all of us. You guys included, our teachers included, our parents included, not just valuable for us, as you'd stated.
Okay. Yeah, so maybe we can schedule and let's get, you know, cause I know I, I love Calvert County School. You know, COVID has made it impossible to go visit, but you know, to actually go and talk to them and hear, you know, and, and, um, you know, those folks that, that work with the kids every day. So maybe we can schedule something like that, Mr. President, and we'll.
Part, part of this is, I'm sorry.
So, and yeah, and so we can kinda get the budget piece moving here and we'll hit that on that, that day. So.
And, and part of this as well, I think, is attuned to the fact that we've missed some of the joint meetings that were originally agreed to with the Board of Ed and us. And so some of these things, like the, the one last question I would like to ask, and it's again off-budget, but I would love to ask the school board, but we can't get with the school board to ask them the question. Why do you guys mute to microphones when you have the pledge, when you guys do the Pledge of Allegiance? No answer today. I just, because I'm sure, I don't, I doubt you know this specific answer, but for months and months and months, every single time the school board comes on, they bring the meeting to order. And then they say, well, we're gonna stand up and say the pledge. Boom, microphones go silent. And then immediately after the pledge, the microphones come back on. That's just something I've noted. It kinda rubs me the wrong way a little bit. I kinda like the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's not your responsibility, but.
Right.
Uh, the Board of Education has an open invitation and we have been waiting patiently for them to come. So.
The, um, I heard Mr. Comfy say recently at this meeting that we need to have better communication. So.
Well, last fall, we talked to the Board of Education, said we would start meeting quarterly jointly together. And they said, we'll come here first. And we all did. All of us showed up on a Thursday morning for their meeting. They were supposed to come in early January. They canceled the day before. And I've asked for them to reschedule and I hear they're too busy. So we're trying.
We'll continue to try.
And we'll continue to try. Well, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And appreciate your presentation. And I guess we'll see you tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, maybe. No, uh, the next work session on the schedule, item number two, Department of Public Works.
Sure you wanna come up, Curry?
Director Dahl.
I think they wanted to zoom in, but we missed the opportunity.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon, gentlemen.
Afternoon. Afternoon, gentlemen. Thanks for giving us this opportunity to come and talk to you today about this. Okay. So, purpose of this presentation is to provide background and current planning information related to the Prince Frederick Service Area. The Water and Sewer Division. Say again? Oh, my apologies. Kerry Dahl, Director of Public Works. To my right is James Ritter. He is Deputy Director for Enterprise Funds of Public Works. As I was reading, the Water and Sewers Division is assessing a multi-year study to determine the long-term solution for public sewer in Calvert County. The study and staff assessment looks at multiple opportunities and their feasibility of application throughout Calvert County. This presentation will briefly address conceptual planning to address increased capacity requirements in the Prince Frederick Service Area. So we, uh, back in February, provided a, a response to a question, referenced capital planning projects for the Water and Sewer Team, uh, to the Planning Commission. Uh, the, uh, the, the program manager, uh, used the term failing when he was describing the response to a request that was provided to him from the Planning Commission. They asked us to come back and further define what that project was. This past Wednesday, we went to the Planning Commission and provided feedback to that. This is the, is the exact presentation that we provided for them and we're providing for your information. So first of all, the term about failing, the Prince Frederick Water and Sewer System is not failing. Okay? Uh, what's happening is, is that we are creeping up on capacity. Okay? Capacity currently right now is 71%. Now, when we're at 71%, okay, we, we start looking at alternatives. We've actually been participating, are working, uh, for about three years now, assessing, assessing the, the, the whole Prince Frederick Service Area. And when I, when we start talking about, uh, we are at 71%, 80% is actually a requirement set by MDE that we have to have something in place or start planning for something to actually increase capacity. So we're well ahead of that right now when we're looking at this expansion as far as the capacity goes. So, but we looked at it, we were looking at increasing the capacity for Prince Frederick One Plant, which is in the West. And it is a lagoon system. It is the lowest level of treatment system that we have online in Prince Frederick. And when we looked at the increasing its capacity, we had to look at, when we look at it and turning it into an enhanced nutrient, uh, reduction system, uh, we're looking at a system that would essentially need more places or a larger capacity to deposit the treated, uh, water responsibly back into the environment. So when we started looking at it, we started running into some limitations. Those limitations included what's up there. We have the incorrect soils. When we start talking about a rapid, rapid infiltration basins, uh, like the ones we have down in Solomon's, we don't have the right soils for that. When we looked at the incompatible land usage rights, uh, the, the property that we could acquire or use is, is incorrectly zoned. So when we look at the, the property available for purchase, we're not finding property that's actually available for purchase to be able to do that, to expand. And I'll just keep in mind that when we look at some of these things, we're actually looking out 30, 50 years as far as the actually where we want to take this.
Quick question, Kerry. How long, how many years has it taken to get to the 71% capacity?
The last time I checked it, we had, we ran the numbers this morning, we've probably increased about in the last five years, I think we've gone up about six or seven percent.
Six or seven percent?
Roughly, yes.
Is all the building that's going on in Prince Frederick?
Yes, we had a slight dip actually because of COVID, believe it or not. Because there was less capacity that was used for, we'll say, commercial use. Because some people, businesses weren't there and some of the development did not happen because of COVID. So there was a slight dip, but it's coming back up to normal levels pre-COVID.
So is there any reason to panic right now at 71%?
I I right now, it's not, it's not time to panic, but it is time to plan to come up with an alternative. That's where we are right now. And that's what that's what we've been doing for three years is looking at the opportunities that we have out there.
So if we kept building at the rate it's been going, which has been less than a half a percent a year, correct?
It's about a percent a year is what I'll call it, maybe slightly over that.
Okay. So if we do over the next five years, we still will only be at less than 80%?
We're going to be, we're going to be bumping up on 80 and I would anticipate that we definitely got to have to, you know, have a design that we're going to have to submit to Maryland Department of Environment on how we're actually going to set that for the for the future.
Gotcha.
We have to have a plan in place.
And how how long will it take you to to do to do this project? Like two years, a year, three years?
For the plan?
Yeah.
Oh, we we've been working on this current plan for a little over three years because we're right now.
And we installed it into the CAP into CIP process. And I think we had it in like year three. We were actually planning on actually doing construction and stuff along that lines.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So we're about six years out essentially from actually constructing what we're going to talk about here in a few seconds.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna let James cover the two different plants.
So at Prince Frederick Water Treatment Plant One, that's the plant that is in Barista. At that facility, we spare irrigate about 100 acres of forest land. As Kerry mentioned, that is a lagoon facility, so it's the lowest level of treatment available. Whereas at Prince Frederick Number Two Plant, which is located off the back of Ridge, that facility, we spare irrigate about 70 acres of forest land. And that's what's called a BNR facility, a biological nutrient group facility. So it's just below the highest level of treatment available in the state.
So when we started looking at opportunities, one of the opportunities that came up in our our conceptual development is actually running a forced main line from Prince Frederick down to the Solomon's wastewater treatment plant. Now, these these forced mains would be lined up in a utility right away, which is already being used by other utilities to get down there.
What is the capacity in Solomon's right now?
The current facility is rated for 750,000 gallons per day. We're treating on average about 400,000 gallons.
But once you start sending it from Prince Frederick down there, where are you going to be?
We, right now, we have a capacity bill to take one of the Prince Frederick plants offline, so 350,000 gallons of capacity. That'll bring Solomon's to its capacity. As part of the plan, we're looking at increasing the discharge area in Solomon's. It allows the handle of growth going into the future.
So what do what do we do when both facilities are at capacity?
Well, you you take Prince Frederick Two offline, you're now, you're no longer at that capacity in that area. So you're actually increasing the the capacity in Solomon's. And with with that designated increase, then we're probably, what are we going to be at after that? Yes, after you, after, if we went through the full upgrade that we're talking about, where would we be?
Solomon, we would be back below the 80% with the current additional 350,000 gallons of capacity. That'll bring us close to our capacity in Solomon's.
Okay.
Okay, but in Solomon's, because we have the room and the footprint to expand, we have the acreage. We have 15 rapid infiltration basins that are down there right now with the capability to get to more because of the soils and everything and the compatibility. Next. Okay, let James cover actually what Solomon's is and how it's set up.
So at Solomon's, we have rapid infiltration basins. They're similar to the to the large sand trap. It basically allows that flow to percolate down into the groundwater and through several layers of different aggregate. As you can see from the map, those are predominantly around the plant. What we've been looking at for the the last year or so is the ability to expand those rapid infiltration basins on the land, the county areas. The soil is very conducive to that. Based on the studies right now, we are able to essentially double the capacity in Solomon's and build issues on the land we already have.
Are there any other alternatives other than this? Have we looked at any other alternatives?
Go ahead.
Yeah, we we've been looking at additional land for spare irrigation. We've also looked at well injection, which is another option, but the state currently doesn't have regulations to allow that. And we are limited by the comprehensive plan in the county to our ability to discharge. So it can only be groundwater discharge.
I heard somebody use a term with to me the other day, an EDU. How does, what is an EDU and how does that apply to the sewer system?
So an EDU is an equivalent dwelling unit.
Okay.
Essentially, we allocate 200 gallons per day of capacity for every EDU.
Okay, so doing some quick math. If we're 9% off of where MDE is going to start forcing our hand to do something, how many EDUs would that be? Quick math, maybe 1100 to 1400, give or take, guess?
We have it right now, based on our current flows, in Prince Frederick, we have about almost 1,200 EDUs available based on current permitting in Prince Frederick.
Okay, so 1,200 EDUs would put us at the 80%?
That puts us at 100%. Another 450
Whoa, I'm sorry, what?
At 100%, another 450 EDUs will get us to the 80. I'm sorry.
Wow. So four 450 EDUs
Correct.
puts us at 80%?
Yes.
Over what we have today?
Correct.
How much does a restaurant, how many EDUs does a typical restaurant use?
We have a calculation for that using our EDU table. So it depends on the number of seats, what type of service it is. So it it can vary. On average, it's usually three or four, depending on capacity.
That's square footage.
It can be square footage, fixture counts, number of seats, how how that restaurant's operated.
Okay, so if not a, if I'm understanding this, if not a single additional business is opened right now and Prince Frederick tied into the sewer system, not one. Did I understand at 450 more dwelling units, we're going to be at the 80% ish?
Yes, at this point, we have to begin planning.
Okay. And of that 450, are any of the townhouses and currently approved projects already accounted into that?
That 450 is based on current assigned allocation. So anything that's potentially permitting, that hasn't purchased EDU or tabs, isn't accounted for.
Is not accounted for.
Correct.
Wow.
So the, to get specific, the project behind Radio Shack, I don't know what they call it. Excuse me?
Calvert Hills.
Calvert Hills. Is that accounted for in your already?
Not in the remaining available capacity. It's accounted for in our plan.
But it would be part of the 450?
Correct, which would get us to the 80. Yes. So we subtract that from the 450.
Right. So do you know of any other projects in Prince Frederick that are permitted but not have been built that still have to go against the 450?
Magnolia Ridge?
But it's not, it's not permitted.
It's not permitted.
It's not permitted yet.
At what part of the permit process does the EDU come into play? Like when you go down a file for it?
When when commercial development is happening in energy, it's called a public works agreement. And in the public works agreement, that's where we'll establish the EDU allocation for the development.
And Armory Square is not accounted for?
So just just for clarification, on in the parlance of the Planning Commission, you've got concept approval? Correct? And then you have preliminary approval? So I think that's the differentiation here. Because concept is just a concept, preliminary approval is the final. So I'm just trying to help you. That's all, James.
He's always trying to help everybody.
I am.
So you're but until they get final approval
Preliminary.
He's not accounted for. Right, and that's where I'm trying to.
Yeah, well, that's what he said. Until they actually get final approval is when he takes it off the books.
Right, when we would enter to a public works agreement.
Because it can change. They submit a concept and even in design, that number can fluctuate.
Correct, or or other development might move faster.
One of the things that just kind of startled me. I've been, I was at the first Planning Commission meeting when originally came out, then I was at the last one, and I'm here now. One of the things I heard right at the beginning was this is a 50-year plan, this and that, we look out 50 years, we're planning on it. About three or four minutes ago, quote, we are about six years out from building what will, what we'll talk about in a moment. That kind of, that kind of set home to me. We're talking less than, you know, six years when we're starting this pipe, the pipeline or whatever. And then to find out that we've got less than 450 dwelling units left, that adds that that.
Are you talking EDUs or?
EDUs.
EDUs. EDUs, yeah, EDUs dwelling units. That kind of brought it home to how this is very much on the short-term varie- horizon.
But even in six years, we we won't be at full capacity?
Yes, you will.
At 80, you have to make a decision.
At 80% is when
You have to make a decision.
they start planning normally, but you're planning a little ahead of time.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
There's three projects in planning right now that'll eat up that 450. Or and maybe more.
It's going to force you to make that decision.
That will bring you up to the 80.
Correct.
Yep, over 80.
Hence why we're starting earlier, prior to the 80%. We're not waiting for that trigger to actually begin that.
Right, and we started this planning over three years.
Right, but question that somebody on the Planning Commission asked. If there was no additional build out in Prince Frederick, how long would the Prince Frederick plant last into the future? And the answer that was given was indefinitely. That that's the case?
Based on current permitting and operations.
Right. Right, so right now, sounds like there's two options. One, in six-ish years, build a pipe from Prince Frederick to Solomon's. Double or triple the size of the Solomon's plant now, which would bring it up to much closer to its capacity. Or do whatever we can to limit the growth and the expense of the EDUs in Prince Frederick to where the current system would last, quote unquote, indefinitely. Those are the two options that I'm hearing.
So in the comp plan, we were supposed to amend the adequate public facilities to take this into account, but that has not happened yet, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Administrator, do you know where we are on that? So in the last comprehensive plan that was adopted three years ago, we were supposed to amend the adequate public facilities ordinance to include looking at water and sewer and public safety and some other items. I don't believe that's happened yet.
We've begun the process of doing the analysis for the adjustments that we have to make in the language to actually submit that to, but we've
So you're working on it?
Yes, sir, we are.
Commissioners, to answer your question, Mark Willis, County Administrator. So all staff were directed to look at their individual departments. So it's how many ambulances do we need per capita? How many fire trucks? You know, what's the level of service at intersections? How much water and sewer capacity? How many police force? So right now, currently, what we have on the APFO, the Adequate Public Facilities, that does impact when growth is allowed, or at least a density of growth is allowed, is the school system being overcrowded, and that's 100%. If it reaches 100%, a moratorium is put in place that require, well, it it is, it's already in place with the APFO. If you go over 100%, like Northern High School was many years ago, it was an automatic seven-year delay until such time as that particular school, that district, went under 100%. If any time the school went under 100%, building could start again, as long as it didn't put it over that 100%. The level of service, what we refer to that as basically how long does it take to get through intersections down the road, et cetera? Those are the only two current. We are looking at a county-wide, service-wide, infrastructure-wide approach to the APFO. Now, we have a monthly meeting on that. We've already had meetings on it, so we're moving forward with it.
But since we don't have that currently in the APFO, at what point? James is not really taking it into account till it's at the final stage, so that's after permit has been approved. James is just taking that into account. What if he doesn't have the capacity to take it? We've given them a permit to move forward.
Commissioners, first, I would like to point out that if if we set aside an EDU every time somebody said they were going to build something in the county, we would not move forward ever. Because the the projects that they're talking about, Magnolia, for example, is well over a decade old. Not a single unit has been built there. If you go down to Solomon's
Do they have a permit?
No, sir.
No.
So they never had a permit. I'm I said, until they get a permit is not until he takes them into account.
But true, that's right. But he doesn't, he can't take them into account because as soon as he ties up all those EDUs, no one will apply for those EDUs because he's going to tell them there are no EDUs available. If I take Solomon's, Harbors of Solomon's, for example, that had 241 or 257 units down there. They built phase one, which was roughly 55 units. We told them for now going on 15 years. They still have those EDUs tied up. So those EDUs in Solomon's, I know don't affect Prince Frederick, but they're tied up simply because they said they want to build something. There are no permits in hand for those units.
I get that part. If I were a developer and I went through the entire process and planning zoning says, yep, you're good, we're giving you a permit. I don't want to get a phone call from Mr. Ritter saying, oops, sorry, I ain't got no hookups for you. That's my point here.
True.
I understand people come in with concepts and we can't tie them up at that point. But Mr. Ritter has said, when they get the final approval is the only time he counts them. What if he said, I ain't got them? I would not be happy.
Then they don't get to move forward with the, I mean, that's, we can't guarantee permit. We can't guarantee water sewer usage if we don't know exactly who's going to put a permit in. He can only go by that permit to actually to actually deduct that capacity from the system. So we have 450 units left, EDUs, equivalent dwelling units, before we get to that 80%. It's only at the 80% by Maryland Department of the Environment that triggers that they begin to look at fixing the capacity. They've been looking at trying to fix that capacity for years. We we were looking at trying to fix the capacity going back a decade. And how we do that is planning and zoning will get interested parties all the time. I want to build this. I want to build that. It's a, it's a dream. It's a concept. Sometimes it becomes reality. More often than not, it does not become a reality. When they finally get through to the point where they're going to spend a lot of money and and design something and go through the the technical evaluation group to get it approved by the reviewers. That is what leads them to planning and zoning, zonings, inspections of permits office to get an application for a permit. That triggers an application to the Water and Sewer Division that then says, I need this many EDUs. And then they phase it out. So if you have a development like Oakland Hall, this hundreds of units, that's in five phases. That's in, that that's going to take them five, six, seven years to build. So I know it sounds bad. But the capacity that they have of 400, even that, if we had a facility, if we had a a plan in Prince Frederick to build 500 or 450 units, it would take them years to do that. Not just years to get to that point, but then years to physically build those units. That's why they're trying to stay ahead of it. I I will go on record as saying, we don't like the idea of the pipe. We don't like that. But it it's a, it's one of many options that have to be considered. On-site finding space around the Prince Frederick area is the best idea, I think. But it's, it's been difficult to find, but they're going back to the board and they're looking for it to keep it here in Prince Frederick.
Yeah, if you buy a piece of property in Prince Frederick right now, like you were saying, and you wanted to start the process, you're looking at three years before you get even close to a permit, in my opinion. you're looking at three years before you get even close to a permit, in my opinion, from what I've seen, so.
I, I think the issue, gentlemen, is real, that, you know, we have to take a look at making sure that we're going to have enough capacity going forward. There's no doubt. We have to do something about it. I think, I, I think I've said for years now that the best way that we do that is to increase our adequate, adequate public facilities requirements. It's not just roads, it's not just schools, it's can we provide the police force, can we provide the fire and the rescue? Can we provide the parks and the wrecks? And I'm not talking about just identifying a park, but actually being able to afford the staffing that goes with that. Adding more property to Calvert County in a park doesn't do us any good if I can't give the director of Parks and Wrecks the staff to adequately, to facilitate that area. So, the idea is that sometimes we get ahead of ourselves. I think we need to slow it down and realize what we're putting out there. And only when we can support it, that's when we support it. But I think we do that by going after the APFO more vigorously than we have in probably 30 years.
How much land do you need in Prince Frederick to, to stay, to keep it right here?
50 or something. Yeah, right, right now, based on the studies we've done, we're looking at about 150 acres additional spray area. And we also have to build additional storage capacity.
But that's only if you can find the adequate soil, which you haven't found yet.
Mr. President, if I may, so, look, this is a serious issue. We have been kicking this around. Going to Solomon's is so unrealistic. So, that plan is like saying, I'm going to the moon. Because we get the studies from Mill Creek, and what happens? At Mill Creek, we can't get it healthy. We know that they are on a path for holding tanks. That's a hard pill to discuss, but I've discussed that with the Health Department several times. The Ranch Club, Drum Point, have no room to dig additional fields or anything. That's a problem that the lake is, is discovering now in the Ranch Club. So, to take that pipe down there and now the capacity that that area is going to need, that's so unrealistic. Number one, the millions of dollars, even if MDE kicks it in, they never pay for everything. You already seen where the budget thing is. So, look, we've talked all this. I have a motion, Mr. President, that I want to put forth. And my motion is this. I move, we conduct a public hearing imposing a 12-month moratorium on the issuance of all further approvals within the Prince Frederick Town Center and service area of the Prince Frederick Sewage Treatment Facilities until a further study conducting and regarding the equitable allocation of remaining capacity and sufficient reserve capacity for failing systems within the service area of the Prince Frederick Sewage Treatment Facilities. Sewage treatment options within and immediate adjacent to the Prince Frederick Town Center and the service area of the Prince Frederick Sewage Treatment Facilities, and the means and measures to implement available options in a cost-effective manner with an appropriate financial burden borne by the benefactors.
Second.
So, I have a motion in a second. So, the public hearing is to discuss a moratorium for Prince Frederick. And part of those findings are that they find additional capacity?
Yes, sir.
In that time. I'm just trying to make sure your motion, it was a long motion.
I know, I know.
And, so, timeframe?
12 months.
That would be limited to Prince Frederick only. Anything that would have to be in a Prince Frederick sewer tap area.
Yes, sir.
And, does that affect Mr. Attorney, Calvert Hills? Is the project there behind radar shot? That's already permitted to go, but has not, well, there is an excavator sitting there, been there for two years, but. So, what's the impact to permits already issued?
As I understand, if this, if this public hearing results in the issuance of the moratorium as it's been described, permit in hand does not legally vest someone in the right to go forward. The board can create, and sometimes does create grandfathering provisions that are more lenient than the legal requirements for vesting. Under the law, you're only vested once you have not only that permit in hand, but actual construction coming out of the ground that's consistent with that permit to be vested.
So, in your motion, is that reflected?
It can be, if that's the will of the board.
Just so I can understand and have a better definition on it. I don't want to, I, I, we're two weeks away from a public hearing, possibly two weeks plus if we don't make a decision that evening. But let's just say, what I don't want to see is an Oklahoma gold rush of excavators.
Oh, absolutely.
Running out, starting to poke holes, dig holes, get permitting's done over the next 14 days.
And that's why, for the 12 months to figure out where we are, we have got to stop the bleeding immediate.
So, I, I am, I, I hear and understand exactly what Mr. Attorney, Mr. Norris, sorry, you know what I meant, what he explains as far as something coming out of the ground. On one hand, I could see, let's just, I don't know if this is possible, but we're making this public today. There's going to be a public hearing two weeks from now, it sounds like, probably, if the motion passes. Is there a way that we can say, okay, if you had a building permit in your hand with a grading permit and you've dug a hole prior to 12 o'clock this afternoon, you're okay. But anything beyond that, that's going to get held up for a little while until we can figure out, you know, how to put one into triage mode.
It's, it's less advisable, but let me point out too, that just a grading permit does not vest someone in the right to go forward with their development plan. A grading permit allows them to clear that land, not necessarily build the improvement. That they may still be waiting on final site plan approval, public works agreements, any other number.
Right, for example, I believe that there's a, and I'm trying to picture it in my head when I drove home last night, but I believe that there's a restaurant in Prince Frederick that's under construction that's got its, its drive-through already built. And I'm trying to remember, I don't think it's got footers in the ground yet for the building itself. A situation like that is clear that that construction is already in progress, it's already there. Even though they don't have a physical footer in the ground as of today, to me, that would make sense to allow that to continue through to fruition and not hold something like that up. What I'm trying to make sure is that we don't, like I said, that I don't wake up tomorrow morning and see a, an endless list.
That has happened in the past.
That's what I'm saying, I mean.
When, when the impact fees were increased by $9,000, and please don't hold me to the number, but I want to say it was 278 went through.
Right.
So, that, there is history to speak to that.
I just don't want to wake up in the morning and there be, you know, all the truckers in the Freedom Convoy all hook up to an excavator and come down Route 4 in order to set up, you know, stuff in the next 10 days. That's, that's, and I'm being a little sarcastic, trying to add a little bit of humor into something so serious, but.
In a public hearing schedule, you have to advertise for how long?
We should advertise that for two weeks, which would make it three weeks from today, just because of advertising deadlines.
And the public hearing is just to gather information to determine, make a determination?
Correct.
And I'm hearing, have to have dirt moved?
Correct. Just thinking about it.
That would be, that would be the minimum, I would think. The county attorney suggested foundation and sticks out of the ground. Is, if what I understood you to say correctly.
That's the legal definition of when you must recognize someone's right being exercised before you have to compensate them for taking. So, the board can be more generous and say, dirt moved. But we can also bring options to the public hearing if you'd like to hear input on those options, whether you follow the strict legal definition or you follow.
Commissioners, if I may, also, our Department of Planning and Zoning is listening to this, they provided some additional information just now. So, permits in hand in Prince Frederick are 92. So, when I'm speaking about Magnolia or anywhere else, I didn't say that they, if there are 400 units out there, doesn't mean they have permits. It means they have a dream to have permits, but we do have 92 units from a couple of different smaller or what's left of some, of projects left on the books where they have permits in hand. So, and that's where.
92 permits or 92 EDUs worth of permits?
Well, 92, yeah, 92 EDUs worth that would require those permits that are underway in some way, shape, or form.
So, not 92 separate projects?
It's not 92 separate projects. It could be like Protoxic Crossing that are finishing out their, their current build-out. It could be the, you know, the, the restaurants that are, they, they're going to account for those because en masse, they've designed or they've looked at EDUs for what they've currently built and then what they currently have that drive around for. So, they, they're going to account for those. So, that, that 92 would get us close to what's already on the books.
And the goals for the hearing are to determine options for septic treatment expansion in Prince Frederick? I'm asking questions.
I was, I, the way I heard the motion was, the motion was to set a public hearing in order to implement a moratorium, building a moratorium. So, then we could sit there over the next however many months to explore the options and what would be possible.
I'm just trying to help staff so they know what they're supposed to provide as information to make that determination. If that sounded right. Is that right? So, that, that's all I'm trying to do here is to, to outline, if the motion passes, what information you expect at that hearing to help you formulate a decision. That's all I'm trying to do. So, it's input from Public Works about capacity and where we are today and how we move forward. It could be planning and zoning on what's, what's approved, but maybe not built, but.
Economic developments, or?
And economic development, I don't know what they might have in the plans.
Sure, they're, they're working with any of the businesses that are already coming in that either have shovel in the ground or would like to put a shovel in the ground one day, just to keep them in the loop.
Right. So, I just want to say that, you know, I was caught by surprise the other night and did meet with Director Dahl and James the other day. And, you know, the challenge for Prince Frederick is finding that 150 acres of appropriate ground is the issue. I think you all know the concerns we have for a pipe running 20 miles. Things that can happen to the pipe and what that pipe can then open up.
Could change the complexion of the entire county, because you know, any given day, three votes, somebody can say, well, you know what? Let's go here, let's go here. You know, it's, it's, it could be catastrophic. It's not how we live. That's, it would change the complete, it has the capability to change the complete landscape of how we live. And that's not what we do.
Because while we say the pipe goes in with no connections allowed, as Commissioner Hart says, that can change any day and.
You know, it takes us three votes, so, that's too dangerous for me.
So, your motion is to conduct a public hearing to determine if we should implement a moratorium in Prince Frederick Town Center only for 12 months to determine the future of capacity of sewer and water on build-out. And in order to move forward, if you have a permit in hand and have moved dirt, would allow you to continue on from this day.
I'm fine with what the attorney suggested, is something out of the ground. I, I'm, I'm fine with whatever. I was just trying to make a definition of where, where the process is.
I'm just trying to clarify the motion, because we're going to get phone calls. Mary Beth's going to get phone calls.
If I may, buddy?
Yes, sir.
Um, I mean, I would, there's many people out there that have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on engineering. To just stop them in their tracks is just bad for business all the way around. That's my, that's my opinion. And, and most of us up here are business owners, and you should all put yourselves in their shoes. If they've started a process, they've been working with the county, we have some people that actually have agreements with the county, and to put out all that money and to just stop them in their tracks over hitting the panic button when we're not even at the 80% yet, I just don't understand what the big panic is all of a sudden. That's just my 20%. Where, when we get to 80% is when you start planning, and we're panicking at 71%. I, I agree with Mike. I don't want to see the pipeline go down to Solomon's. I want to continue to try to find a solution in the Prince Frederick area, if possible. That's, that is the best solution. But to, somebody that's gone through the process of five years of trying to get their permits and do everything, and then say, you're done for a year, you can't do nothing because you don't have a permit in your hand, is just, it's an obstruction of justice, in my opinion, to do to small businesses in this county.
I'm still looking for guidance.
I am still unclear. I, I, you know, it just, you know, just, the whole nature of this discussion was about water and sewer, long-range infrastructure planning. And I got to agree with Commissioner McConkey. I think it's a little bit premature. I, how about another work session? This is a concept. There's nothing, there's, there's nothing, so.
So, Steve, well, I would say that is, once you get to 80%, you're forced to make a decision. It's taken three years since we've approved the clubhouse and, at the golf course. And we're no closer today hardly than we were three years ago. We've got a few things on paper. So, we are going to have to be so proactive. It's not hitting the panic button. It's, we're there. And, and water and, this water sewer, this is just one small piece of it. It's beside, some of the stuff that County Administrator said, roads, police, everything. This just really brings to light that where we are, we should have been on this years ago. So, so that would have been the time to maybe, to, to go, but we're, I think we're right up to it right now where we have got to put the brakes on and reassess. And, I mean, it's not fair to put this burden on taxpayers, because that's who's going to pay the bill when the roads aren't there, when the septics fail, when everything, that's who's going to pay the bill. So, I don't think, I don't think it's, it's, it's overreacting at all. I think it's, it's, it's time to, hey, stop, catch breath, see where we are, and then make a logical decision. But I think we're going to need at least 12 months to do so, because there's a lot of things to, to long, long-term. A 50-year plan, and we already seen we could be right there in six years, so. And, and, and building a pipe ain't, ain't the plan.
Well, anybody that started the process should be grandfathered in. It would be wrong to not grandfather them in, to have to, you could go spend a million dollars on a project, do all the designing with the architect and do everything, and because they don't have that shovel in the ground at the county commissioners, and one session can hold a public hearing in two weeks to completely shut the complete project down is absurd, absurd.
From what I've heard, we've got basically one quarter of the available resources left to us that are already accounted for of the 92 EDU equivalents that are currently permitted and ready to go, which would leave us less than 325-ish, 330, something like that, before we get to that 80%, which is that, that 80% is, that's the fork in the road. That's the fork in the road where a decision's got to be made to go left or go right, pipeline, pipeline south or, or significantly slow where we're at. pipeline south, or, or significantly slow where we're at so we can buy time to find some sort of alternative here. Because in a three- or four-year, or five-year period, something like that, we saw, I'm gonna take a stab, it's five to six hundred units go in in Prince Frederick. That's a guess off of what I've seen. I don't know if anybody can correct me on that, I'm happy to be corrected on it. But in a five- or six-year period, we saw five-hundred-plus units go in. On top of that nine-hundred, that is going to basically eat up the hundred percent of the availability that we have, assuming that we're gonna add a couple of businesses into the mix as well between now and then. So I, I, I think we definitely oughta need a, not a hard stop, but a hard pause. Let's get some people in the public end, get their opinions, and make a decision going from there.
Well, you could always put in a tax amendment to stop further, um, building of apartment buildings, 'cause that's where you're gonna get your-
I tried to, you voted against it.
That's where you're gonna try to get your, uh, the most EDU's.
Right. I tried to, and that's what, that's, that's coming up in the public hearing next month.
I'm still working on my clarity, so what's the cutoff? I hear, uh, in-process is okay, I hear dirt, I hear, yes, sir, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. Mr. President, there's nothing we can do today that's defensible that would stop somebody from exercising their permits. What I would propose to take to public hearing is a list of options, because we want the board to be able to accept input on plans that have phases, plans that have been through concept, plans that have been through final site plan, plans that have only been through subdivision, um, so that the board has a whole list of options if there is to then be a moratorium put in place.
So-
This board don't get quiet very often.
I, um, I'll, uh, try to make a, a middle position here. But there is a motion on the floor, so I can't do it until-
There's an amendment?
The, uh, motion maker is, I think, uh, signified that he may be in, open to an amendment.
Is he?
Depending on the amendment, I guess.
Hey, you know, about six, seven months ago, I floated an idea.
Yeah.
So?
So, your motion, Commissioner Hart?
Um, could you, um, retract twelve-month moratorium? And ask for options at a public hearing inclusive of a moratorium? I think that's what John, uh, was alluding to, um-
My caution is, like Commissioner, it was either Hans or Gadway, is that all of a sudden we don't have this onslaught, you know, of, to get it done. You know, the, 'cause the main goal here, it's not to harm anybody, it's actually to protect, you know, and, and that is, you know, um, to, you know, if, if you outgrow-
Oh, you're gonna have an onslaught, though.
Oh, there's no doubt. Absolutely. But, but here, but here's, here's the piece of it is, if, if you don't have a place for water and sewer, and you keep building on top of it, then what? Then it's a mess that-
We've got a hundred-and-fifty acres in Prince Frederick that we're looking for. Could that be one of the options?
Potentially, but-
Well, and that's where I'm trying to, I'm trying to help John, I'm not trying to help you.
But I think until, until, right, until we, until we know what the answer is, I don't wanna keep making the burden tougher and tougher. You know? So, I mean, if we don't have, and right now, we don't have a solution. I mean, that, that's, that's apparent. We don't have a solution today. So because we don't have a solution, we need to put the brakes on until we get that solution. That's the only responsible thing to do. I mean, I've heard a lot of feelings in seven years, and I don't mean to, but I mean, I don't wanna be irresponsible either and say, "Hey, well, we're just gonna keep plowing ahead and plowing ahead, and we'll figure it out." And that, that to me is the irresponsible way to go. The responsible thing is to have a plan. What are you going to do when you exceed this? And we don't have a plan today as it exists. So that's why you put the brakes on and then come up with a plan and then proceed from there.
Commissioner Hart, could you do me a favor and please reread your motion, so I, I know it's a long one, but just so I can under, because I think we, I don't wanna get too far off track, and I know we already have. But I believe that it's asking for a public hearing to discuss the viability of a moratorium based on information that we learn. That's kinda the impression that I got.
In a nutshell.
It's not calling for it.
Well, it, the motion is to put a twelve-month moratorium until we have adequate-
The motion is to have a public hearing.
Right, a public hearing, right, right, to determine that.
Right. So, all this is doing is it's allowing us to get to the public hearing.
Right.
And if it's determined that we need to, or the public supports, or whatever the case, that we need to move forward with that twelve-month tor, moratorium, we can at that point.
Right, there's still flexibility once we get public input back.
If we decide we don't, and then another a, a, alternative op, option is presented, then great. That, then, then the moratorium's voted no. It's voted no on that at that point. Um, the, to going to Mr. President Hans's question, I am fine with permits, shovel in the ground, et cetera. However, it's my understanding, as of today's date, with that motion, that we don't need to decide that today, because any motion coming out of the public hearing would specify that. Does that make sense?
It does, to a degree. But the motion is unclear. It's lengthy. Um, I think it needs to be simplified. And I'm, I'm gonna try to, attempt to, to help.
So, so Steve, why don't we do this, why don't I amend it to push for a public hearing to discuss a moratorium on, on, on usage of, of the water and sewer until, until a solution can be found?
How about you say a pathway of options?
Okay, pathway of options.
Incorporate that, and that way it is nondescript.
That pass, Mr. President?
Would it be easier to vote this motion down?
I see your scrip, you're writing vigorously there.
Mr. President, I think it might, and I could be wrong. I think it might be easier to vote this motion down and then have a new motion introduced-
That would.
That might be clear.
Okay, okay.
That would.
Call, Mr. President, call the question.
Oh, uh, any, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hang on.
Yeah.
Oh, I got Steve? Okay, let's go back now.
You caught me off-guard there.
I'm sorry, sir.
You wanna rescind, you, yes?
Yes.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion fazed.
All right, so start over.
Start over, please. Cleaner, shorter.
Mr. Hart, would you like to, or?
So a motion to go to public hearing, to find a pathway, if that word's more tolerable, for a solution to water and sewer, but to impose a twelve-month moratorium. I still am sticking to a twelve-month moratorium, that if, if a solution cannot be found, to a twelve-month moratorium before, before going forward. I mean, we, we can't just say, "Hey, guys, figure it out." Can't. So, so, I mean, I'm, I'm still on that. But I, but to get to a public hearing, to take input, look for a pathway, um, for a better solution. And if that can't be found, then a twelve-month moratorium goes on till, till we find a solution.
So, my opposition to that motion is just the absolute nature of it. There's no, um, shall we say, pathway in my mind of discussing it.
Well, you have the option there, but if, I think if you don't put a hard line in the sand, nothing will happen.
Well-
And, and we've seen that over and over and over to where-
So, so you're discussing a motion that doesn't have a second?
That's true.
Okay, sorry. All right.
I'm really, I'm sorry, gentlemen.
Rescind? Would you care to rescind that? Let's try this again, third time's a charm.
I want any more paper.
So, um, okay, so, okay, a motion to, to discuss a pathway for a solution for the water and sewer problem, to public hearing, to take input, and if that solution cannot be found, to put in a twelve-month moratorium to give us time to come up with a solution before we go forward with any more, um, um, the word, I'm sorry, uh, pulls on this system.
Pretty sure that was the same motion. I'm pretty sure it was the same.
I, it's-
So you have to, you have, if you're gonna have a public hearing, and then outcome may be moratorium, that's gotta be in the motion.
I, I was, and I'm not trying to make a battle of motions, but as an idea, it could be something as simple as to schedule a public hearing to discuss options relating to water, sewer, and Prince Frederick that could include a building moratorium of twelve months.
How's that?
You're getting closer.
I can support that.
Do you rescind your first?
Sure, I'll rescind that motion.
Okay.
And is that a motion?
I will try to recite it as is, to schedule a public hearing to discuss options to the water, to, water sewer, I'm sorry, just, let's forget about water, sewer treatment system in Prince Frederick, that could include a twelve-month building moratorium in Prince Frederick.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, I need discussion on that motion.
I, 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 I'm still, uh, I'd rather have it a little, little clearer with a pa, uh, pathway of, yes. I, I would like a menu of options.
Well, that's what I believe that's what the public hearing would bring.
Yes. So we would direct, from an earlier motion, we would direct water and sewer to propose solutions and probably timelines to implement those solutions. Does that sound right?
Inclusive of a hundred-and-fifty acres in Prince Frederick being acquired?
Yes, yes, yes. So they would present solutions and a pathway on a timeline, estimates, planning and zoning, we lost her, no, there she is, she moved, um, and planning and zoning to talk about, you know, potentials, so that we have some idea of what's coming. And economic development, so that we're all at the party, talking about what they see business development coming. Think I've covered. So those are the, that's the information we would want to have at the hearing.
Yes.
And then based on those findings, we'd make a decision on whether we need to implement a moratorium, whether we don't, what are, what it looks like.
Correct.
Or time for when we're gonna reach that point. How's that sound?
County-
Mr. County Administrator has on the side.
The only, I would not wanna restrict staff to finding a hundred-and-fifty acres within Prince Frederick. I needed to say maybe two oh six seven eight zip code, but not Prince Frederick, 'cause we won't find it, they've already looked.
Yeah. I didn't say in Prince Frederick, that's gonna be hard to do.
I got a funny feeling the price of a hundred-and-fifty acres in two oh six seven eight just went up.
We may already own it. You never know.
Okay.
So.
Oh, now you're calling my way.
All right.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Was there a second?
There was a second.
Chris made a motion on a second, yeah.
Yes, yes. And we, we've been discussing.
It, it's not perfect, but I'm good. Let's do it.
Well, it's just a path to gather information.
Yes.
But at le, at least, it's not a work session, because at a work session, if the determination was made that the majority of the board wanted to move forward on moratorium, we couldn't do it. So this sets us on one path with possible outcomes.
Yes.
Without limits.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, you have your-
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
So just to be clear, no pipes. Don't be buying no pipe.
Yeah, yeah, don't waste that money.
Carrie, you're not thinking about transferring to school board, are you?
Not if you don't, not if you don't fill the facility. If you don't fill the facility, it'll, it'll be good indefinitely.
I've lost my agenda. I think it's public comment.
It is.
Public comment.
After the last in-person, uh, the last person in-person provides public comment, we'll go to the phones. So if anybody's on the phone who wants to provide public comment, please press star nine. Now we will get to you after we finish from those in the room. If anybody in the room wishes to provide public comment, please make your way to the microphone. County commissioners have adopted rules to maintain the order and decorum in keeping with the dignity of the government process. A copy of that is found here to my right. Lobbyists include those who seek to influence local policy and are compensated for doing so, or provide gifts to local officials. Speakers of public comment are strongly encouraged to review the Calver County Ethics Ordinance and register in advance if required to do so. As you come to the microphone, please identify yourself and whether you are speaking as the designated representative of a group or as an individual.
My name is Bob Estes, I live in the Prince Frederick zip code, and I'm an individual today. Four things, let's see if I can get it all. I know finding land is a, is a problem. You, you may have to go three miles away, or four miles away. It's a lot closer than twenty. And you may have to offer outrageous prices. Don't advertise it, maybe, but I bet you it's still gonna be less than thirty or forty million dollars for a full pipeline, not to mention the problems of getting, uh, that through environmental and, and other lands that you need. Let's see, two. And this, uh, moratorium, I suspect that once you find that you've got answers, it might not have to be a year. You'd be flexible, right? So, there's another thing. And also, what would this moratorium do, uh, to, uh, the Prince Frederick master plan? Just kinda curious. And I think, Commissioner Hart, you were speaking of hookups. Well, every road I've ever seen, whether it's a poop road or a, or a traffic road, they have these little Ts in them, and you know what that means when they put that in. I almost guarantee you're gonna see Ts in this, uh, pipeline, which is gonna cause further development perhaps that we don't really want. That's what I got to say today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
My name is Susan DeZurich, and I'm here as an individual. I live in Huntingtown, Maryland. At the very first comprehensive plan meeting, the citizens of this county asked for studies to be done in compliance with the American Planning Association best practices, and we were denied at that meeting, and we have been denied those studies the entire time since. And if those practices had been done, it is an excellent possibility that we would not be here having this discussion today. And to have it come this far without those practices being done is the epitome of poor planning in this county.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? Seeing none, we do have one caller ending in two eight zero three. Caller, please press star six to unmute yourself and identify yourself, and whether speaking as an individual or as the designated representative of a group.
Good morning, county commissioners, my name is Joseph Cormier, it's C-O-R-M as in Mary-I-E-R, and I'll be speaking on behalf of myself, and I'm a resident of Owings, Maryland. I wanna speak this morning and say thank you for, uh, meeting with Dr. Curry and having an open mind during the budget discussion. To Commissioner Gadway's earlier question, the, uh, what comes before an IEP is an IF- Uh, to Commissioner Gadway's earlier question, the, uh, what comes before an IEP is an IFSP, an Individual Family Service Plan that's handled by the Immense and Toddlers Program for Children Birth to Three, with an option to extend into a fourth year for an extended IFSP. But all children from birth to 21 are, uh, accessible to the, uh, Department of Special Education through the Child Find Program. Uh, I hope that as you, you go forward, uh, Mr. Hans, you, you brought up some excellent questions about, you know, inclusion in special education, and I hope that we keep having those conversations, because it's not just a Calver County issue. It is an issue for education systems across the state and the country. Uh, we're only, you know, 60, 75 years into having students with disabilities having access to education instead of being told that they're not available, you know, as students who go to private schools, uh, don't have to, uh, be provided special education services, and it's important for public education to fulfill the need to service those students to their fullest extent, to get that free and appropriate public education. I hope that you will continue to reach out to, uh, CCPS and the Department of Special Education and the Calver, uh, County, uh, CCAC to get more information and to ask these questions, because we're here as a resource for you. Again, I appreciate all the conversation you had today about education and the budget, and, uh, we're watching. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There was one caller who's just joined the line, uh, last four digits, 1-9-9-3. If you wish to provide public comment, please press star six to unmute yourself and identify yourself in whether speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group.
Hi, my name is Katie Eversen, and I, um, currently live in Lovebee, Maryland, and I am speaking as an individual. Um, I am calling regarding three different issues. Um, the first was stemming from earlier this month. I have, um, one child in public school and another child who's currently too young to be in the Calver County public schools, but I just wanted to convey my dismay at the five letters that were issued by, um, the five commissioners regarding whether or not the, um, school board had the authority to make the call about mask mandates. I think that that was a very clear overreach of your power and very inappropriate. Um, as the State Board of Education alluded to, that responsibility was then turned over to each individual Board of Education, um, to make the call whether or not masks would be appropriate. So I hope that we don't see more behavior like that, um, because again, that's what we have a Board of Education for. Um, and as we all know, we are soon to be getting a new superintendent, and I would hope that the commissioners would refrain from injecting your input. Um, again, we have a process for that, and that process has been followed. And, um, the last item I'd like to say is that I think a lot of people would really appreciate it if you could at least, um, make some of your meetings take place in the evening so that people who work full-time have more of an opportunity to participate. And that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Mr. President, that's all.
All right. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hart?
Um, nothing today, Mr. President.
Mr. McConkey?
Nothing today, sir.
Geez. Mr. Gadway?
You aren't getting off that. I gotta get back to it. Had the opportunity to attend Big Lots grand opening today, or not today, I'm sorry, Saturday.
Saturday.
Which, come to find out, from other people in my family, they'd been open multiple days before that. So I'm happy to see yet another, uh, empty store location get filled. Forty-five, I believe, permanent employment positions out of there. Um, had an opportunity to go to the Thursday afternoon Chamber Connect, a Chamber of Commerce, and it was really great to see other business owners come out, interact with each other, and, um, it's kind of neat because Chamber gave out some, uh, little bags with lottery tickets if they drew your business card. So, kind of made it worthwhile a little bit. Um.
Were you, um, successful?
Two dollars.
Good.
Hey. It's two dollars you're doing now.
Out of 10 lottery tickets, but yes, two dollars. At least that's what I'm claiming on my taxes.
No.
Um, I had the opportunity this last week to go to the Southern Community Center for the first time since I've been a county resident in 20-some years. Didn't always tucked back in down there. Really nice place. I encourage people to go down and visit it. Warther, warmer weather, by the way, happy spring. We are officially a day plus into it. With the warmer weather brings out motorcycles, there are going to be more of them out on the road. Please pay attention to the single headlights. Um, beware, share the roads. Thank you.
Mr. Reeves?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Oh, my gosh. Making me look bad. So I too attended the grand openings of Big Lots last Saturday, and, uh, just some information that the, uh, the store manager shared. Uh, they did open a week before that, and the Sunday that they were open, they had more people in their store than any Big Lots store in the entire country. Um, and for some of you like me, I, I remember the old Big Lots stores that were sort of, uh, you know, I don't know where they got their stuff from, but anyhow, uh, Big Lots has changed. Uh, Big Lots today is more like, uh, I was told, a home decor, home decor store, uh, like a mini Target. They had everything in there, and, uh, home, and Big Lots bought out Boy Hill Furniture, which is very good furniture, and the store, the whole center of the store is just Boy Hill Furniture. So it's not the old Big Lots like I used to know. It's, it's new and improved. Yeah, and they sell, they told us that day, uh, the administrator mentioned they sell certain mattresses. They told us that day that nationwide, Big Lots is the largest seller of mattresses. So we learned a lot that day. No free food, but, uh.
They said they were giving away sheep, but I never found them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, uh, so, another new business that we welcome to Calver County. Yesterday, I went to the grand opening, the real grand opening, they'd only been open two hours when I got there, of Batteries Plus in the, uh, uh, Calver Village Shopping Center. Um, they currently have a store in St. Mary's and have expanded to Prince Frederick, so encourage all of you to check them out. Uh, this morning, uh, in staff meeting, we learned that there are only, uh, 26 cases of COVID verified in Calver County today, which is good news for all of us. We were also informed this morning that the, uh, there have been 58 people apply for our public, um, police accountability board. Uh, that deadline is Friday. For any of you out there that still want to apply, you have until Friday, and, uh, get those applications in. And, uh, as Commissioner Gadway mentioned, uh, last Tuesday night, we had a public hearing with the Drum Point Homeowners Association for a special tax district so they can fix up their roads. It was a, it was a very nice public hearing, the one of the few I've ever been to, where the speakers all commended the leadership of their HOA on what great work they were doing and, uh, how wonderful the community was. So, uh, that was really good to hear, because we don't normally hear that at public hearings. There's always one.
That's Trump for them.
But, uh.
That was unanimous.
Yes. Every person there said they, they were doing a great job and supported the increase in the, uh, the special tax. So, uh, like I said, we wanted to call that out, because you don't see that very often. And, uh, we're going to have a public hearing tonight at 7 o'clock for the budget. So for any of you out there interested, is that, uh, Calver Pines or HEB? It's at, it's at the Harry Brown Center on, uh, Dares Beach Road, if you want to attend in person, or you can chime in live via Zoom, uh, so we've been encouraging you to participate. If you have been paying attention, we've been doing budget work sessions, and, uh, unfortunately, uh, we don't have a very bright picture for this year. Uh, there's, today I figured out $21 million in requests, and we currently only expect $7 million in new revenue. So, uh, it's not going to be any fun, but just to share the pain, I talked to a commissioner from St. Mary's County last week, and they thought they were going to have a surplus, and now they have a deficit. So, uh, we're all in the same boat. But, uh, these are important, tough decisions that we're going to have to make, and, uh, a lot of people won't be happy. But, uh, we do have a fiscal responsibility to the citizens of this county to spend their tax dollars efficiently and effectively. And we're going to do, I'm going to do that for sure, and I know my fellow commissioners will too. Uh, that's all I have, so the chair would entertain a motion to... Do we have to go in executive session and recess? How do we do that?
You'll recess from executive session until the public hearing tonight.
All right. Thanks for keeping me straight. Yes, sir. Commissioner Weems?
Yes, sir. Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to General Provisions, Article Section 3-305 B1I to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of an appointee, employee, or official over whom it has jurisdiction, and 3-305 B14 to discuss a matter directly related to the contents of a bid or proposal before a contract is awarded because public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the proposal process.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for what he said.
That's what I was going to say, was what he said.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Y'all have a great day.